Good evening. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for an informational study session on February 19th, 2025 at 7:03. Roll call, Mr. Medina.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Furman.
Here.
Commissioner Grabliunas.
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Overall. Commissioner Peters.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. And I'll just note that both Commissioner O'Neill and Commissioner Overall are excused this evening unfortunately due to illness. First, for folks here and online, want to talk a little bit about what we're doing tonight because this is a study session. It's a very important study session. Not only are we talking about the comprehensive plan, but we're getting our first look at some concepts that might be in eventual zoning ordinance rewrite. This time, we are doing this process in Lakewood different and better. We are doing it where the comp plan, which is the document that is our values and our strategies, is been through a long process, and we are harmonizing that with what the zoning code should be revised to be. But the zoning code, and the reason I mention this is there's been a few comments that have been made questioning about why these two things are moving in tandem. And they're moving in tandem because they need to move in tandem. They are two different documents informed by the same public process. There has been exceptional amounts, massive amounts of public engagement on the comprehensive plan to give us our values and strategies. And the zoning ordinance, of course, is a technical and legal document that implements that. So for folks that are asking the question, why are we seeing the first concepts of the zoning ordinance today when the comp plan has not officially been adopted? That is by design, and that makes more sense. It is an improvement over the previous system, and I, for one, am very glad that we're doing it in a much more logical and harmonious way. So for the zoning rewrite, when we get to that, and if anyone's under the impression there is a draft, they are mistaken, we'll be hearing concepts tonight. So this is really the beginning of that process. But the question that we'll be asking as a commission and then city council will be, does these zoning ordinance changes reflect and are consistent and are harmonious with the comprehensive plan that has gotten so much engagement? So hopefully that kind of sets the stage so that folks know what we're up to. This is a study session, so we've had our first opportunity for public comments. Hopefully everyone has seen the Lakewood Speaks comments that have come in on both the comp plan and on the zoning rewrite. We're going to have a staff presentation to tell us where we are, and then there'll be an opportunity for us to ask questions and make comments as commissioners. My hope is that maybe staff is able to leave here tonight with some pretty good ideas about the final changes that we feel we would like to see in the comp plan. And then after that, we're going to move to the concept document on the zoning rewrite. So with that, I'm not sure who's presenting, but we have PL 250002 and Vision Lakewood 2040, Kristi and Roger Isom.
Yeah, I will start, give a little background. Roger Waddell, Comprehensive Planning Manager in the Sustainability and Community Development Department. And then Kristi Ivanoff, who was the project manager for the comprehensive plan process, will go into a little more depth. What I'd like to do is just kind of introduce the topic here and kind of give you all a little bit of background. This isn't our first meeting with the Planning Commission, you know, and as well as City Council. And Kristi, we'll get into, pull this up a little bit, a little more detail, a lot more detail on the public involvement component. But this has been an extensive process over about two years, really, trying to, listening to hopefully the spectrum of voices in the community. And this particular study session, we will be, let's see if I can get that next slide here. Just wanted to, you know, kind of drill home the point that the comprehensive plan update is presented first, obviously, and then the discussion, whatever discussion Plan Commission desires on it, and then the zoning ordinance update. So, you know, if you have zoning ordinance questions, certainly that's the place to put them. So I just wanted to be clear on the agenda for this evening. So we'll get on with the comprehensive plan. And I wanted to just kind of reiterate the work that's been done to get to this point. And we'll talk a little bit about the planning process and timeline, get into the community engagement. There's been a lot of community engagement, so we won't get into every nuance of it, but the objective is to, again, hear from all voices of the community and have that reflected in the goals and strategies and the vision of the comprehensive plan. Of course, we will talk about the comprehensive plan draft, and then we will go into the next steps. So timeline, oops, oops, I think I missed one here. Oops, okay. There we go. Again, a long-term vision comprehensive plan, this is a 15-year horizon. Comprehensive plans are typically 10 to 15 years out. And again, I talked about reflecting the community's voice in terms of the vision and action steps and strategies, and then provides guidance and recommendation, not only to city staff, but to the public, to the Planning Commission, to City Council as an advisory document. So I'll just repeat that again, an advisory document. And those, the guidance, guidances are reflected in the goals. We have 25 goals and I think 160 strategies that are under each goal or under multiple goals. So there is a lot of specificity in the comprehensive plan in terms of guidance for the future, including guidance on land use as well. Just a little background here, Lakewood Incorporated in 1969, this would be the fifth comprehensive plan. So you can see it's about 10 to 15 years every comprehensive plan is adopted. There's a lot of, some variables due to a lot of factors. Again, I'll just touch on this. The initial work was kind of internal, planning for the plan, a lot of research, looking at best practices, both regionally and nationally, and we found some good models to kind of get ideas from, not to use as a copy or anything, but just to pull ideas, you know, what works, what doesn't work so well. That was completed December 23. And then, really, the work on the planning, developing the plan started in January of '24 with just a number of meetings and public involvement. We utilized, staff utilized consulting assistants, but the plan itself is staff-driven. That's the philosophy I think Lakewood has had, utilizing consultant support, but ultimately for the comprehensive plan to have staff leave that effort. And then early this year, refining the plan, that's where we are. We have essentially a final draft. We don't have the graphics necessarily and some of the background material, but the real core of the comprehensive plan, the vision, the goals, guiding principles and action steps, and they're all there to, and as well as a land use map and the land use categories and the whole discussion on land use, which is intended to guide the community and inform the zoning process as well. So we, you can see by that little arrow, we are here at the first Planning Commission meeting that's really looking at a complete document, going through an adoption process through Planning Commission and City Council. Planning Commission is the entity that adopts the plan and council approves it. And then there's work to be done once the plan is adopted in terms of implementation. The idea is to have implementation a component that's more flexible because things change over a year, two years, five years, and we want an implementation program to be flexible. So that's kind of the framework of things. And I'm going to just turn it over to Kristi to talk about community engagement and the plan itself.
Good evening. Again, I'm Kristi Ivanoff, and I am a senior planner within the Comprehensive Planning Division. So on the next few slides, I will provide a high-level summary of the community engagement process for the comprehensive plan. Phase two, develop the plan, as Roger mentioned, occurred throughout last year and involved ongoing coordination and collaboration with staff across the city, extensive community engagement, support from two consultants, MIG and CDR associates, and feedback from Planning Commission and City Council. To spread the word about the project and to get as many community members involved in the process as possible, the project team attended community meetings, hosted open houses, collected feedback through two surveys, reached out to the Lakewood Spanish-speaking community, met people where they were at through pop-up events, and kept project subscribers informed about updates and ways to participate through the project website, project newsletter, and all other city channels. Again, to those who are watching tonight and who have been a part of the process, thank you to the thousands of community members who have participated in this process by sharing their voices, their stories and perspectives on comp plan topics, providing specific feedback through the surveys, subscribing to the newsletter, and attending events and more. In addition to these broad, community-wide engagement activities, three city council-appointed volunteer advisory groups were formed to have in-depth conversations with community members, planning commissioners, staff, and consultants about the vision, values, and policy direction for the updated comprehensive plan. The three advisory groups were organized by topics. The first group was called Community and Quality of Life, the second Housing and Economy, and the third Transportation, Green Infrastructure and Systems. Members were appointed by the Community Engagement Ad Hoc City Council Committee through an application and selection process back in May of 2024. These 47 Lakewood residents who volunteered to serve on the advisory groups have dedicated approximately 1,000 hours collectively to attend 10 advisory group meetings and three optional virtual sessions throughout last year, reviewing, discussing, and refining several iterations of these comp plan drafts. This photo shown on this slide was taken during our November land use workshop with all three advisory groups, and not every member is shown in this picture. We would like to extend a big thank you to these advisory group members for reviewing the materials before the meetings, actively participating during the meetings, spreading the word about the project, and helping with the community-wide events. Their time, thoughtfulness, and dedication to this process has ensured that the comprehensive plan drafts are reflective of the diverse perspectives of our city. And thank you to planning commissioners, who were a part of the advisory group process as well, and staff and consultants, CDR associates and MIG, who also have supported and contributed throughout this process. This slide shows a snapshot of the engagement numbers. So that was a very high-level summary of the engagement process, and now I'm going to dive into the details of the comprehensive plan drafts that we've shared as part of the meeting tonight. So the comprehensive plan drafts have been developed over the past two years based on input from several of these groups, including, of course, the advisory group members, community members, staff, consultants, technical information such as data and existing conditions, other city plans and regulations, City Council specifically through Resolution 2024-62, and Planning Commission by participating in the advisory process. The plan draft shared for tonight's meeting is structured around three main elements. The vision elements, which include the vision statement, guiding principles, goals, and strategies; the future land use elements, which include the future land use map and nine future land use categories, and a draft glossary. Before we discuss each element in more detail on the next slides, it is important to note the difference between the current draft shared with Planning Commission now compared to the version that will be shared as part of the public hearings. The current draft includes the policy text of these elements, which create the foundation of the plan. The formatted draft will include the final policy text based on the feedback during the study session process, as well as formatting images and supplemental narrative to bring all of these elements together in a cohesive document. The first of the foundational elements is the draft vision elements, as I mentioned, which include the vision statement, five guiding principles, 25 goals, and 160 strategies. Together, these define the shared vision, goals, and priorities for the city over the next 15 years. The vision statement is a concise, aspirational statement that articulates the desired future for Lakewood by describing the high-level vision and values for the city over the next 15 years. The draft vision statement reads, "Lakewood is a welcoming, safe, inclusive, sustainable, and innovative community with thriving neighborhoods, attainable housing, economic opportunity, inspiring parks, and vibrant cultural amenities." The next vision element is the guiding principles, and they expand on the vision statement by outlining five core values that guide all decisions related to implementing the plan. The guiding principles provide formal statements that commit the comprehensive plan and its implementation to furthering these values, promoting that every decision and action be taken with these in mind. These principles are reflected throughout all components of the comprehensive plan through the goals and the strategies, and the five principles are equity, sustainability and climate action, community wellness and vitality, opportunity and mobility, and civic participation. Stepping down to the next two levels, goals and strategies. Goals are statements of desired high-level outcomes by 2040. They are intended to be as clear as possible so that we, as a city, know what we are working to accomplish. And there are currently 25 draft goals. Strategies outline specific vetted approaches to achieve the comprehensive plan goals. Because of the interconnected nature of many goals, each strategy is designed to support implementation of one or more goals. This serves as a roadmap to guide actions and decisions within the city, and there are currently 160 draft strategies. The relationship between the goals and the strategies is different from the last comprehensive plan. In the 2015 comprehensive plan, each goal had a set of action steps that were listed only to support that one goal. This updated plan uses a different approach that addresses the interconnected nature of these planned topics. This means that many strategies will be repeated under several goals, and this is intentional. So that was a summary of the vision elements. These vision elements are then reinforced and geographically mapped through the future land use elements, which is the second foundational component of the comp plan. This includes the draft future land use map and the nine future land use categories. Together, these provide guidance for future land use patterns in the city and inform the zoning ordinance update, which will be the focus of the next presentation and the discussion. So the nine future land use categories included in this future land use map include community hub, neighborhood hub, community corridor, neighborhood corridor, low-form residential, mid-form residential, campus, production and innovation, and parks and open space. The community hub and neighborhood hub, community corridor, and neighborhood corridor categories provide guidance on the spatial arrangement of these mixed-use and commercial areas with the nodal hubs and the linear corridors. The scale of the market service areas also incorporated with the use of community and neighborhood. The two residential land use categories, low-form residential and mid-form residential, correspond approximately to the residential scale and density. These take into account the recent state laws and directly inform the zoning ordinance updates. So that was a very high-level overview of the comprehensive plan drafts that we are sharing tonight. The full draft language, again, of each of these elements was included in the materials that we submitted for tonight's meeting. In the remaining slides, I will share briefly the next steps for the process. As Roger mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, tonight's Planning Commission meeting kicks off phase three of the process, which involves a series of study sessions and public hearings with Planning Commission and City Council. The next study session is with City Council on March 17. The focus of tonight and the study session on March 17 with City Council is to get final feedback on the draft vision elements, future land use elements, and glossary before we incorporate these into the fully-formatted version of the comprehensive plan. The public hearings are now scheduled for April 9 and April 23 with Planning Commission and May 12 with City Council. These dates just changed on Friday, and these have been updated in the presentation and in all of our project communications. The formatted version of the plan will include, as we mentioned, the final policy text, again, based on all the feedback received during the study session process, as well as formatting images and supplemental narrative. These will be shared with Planning Commission one week before the April 9 public hearing. After the comprehensive plan is adopted, the implementation will then be developed, and this will kick off phase four of the process. This is a very important and critical element of the plan, and it will be a next step. The implementation plan may include metrics, qualitative, and quantitative ways of tracking progress for the comprehensive plan. That's the presentation. Thank you again for all of your involvement in the process so far.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of preliminary questions before I turn it over to questions from other members. Was that the end of the presentation, or you've got other?
No, that was the end.
Okay. You said there's 160 strategies?
Yes.
But there are some that are numbered higher than that.
Yes.
So what, so like tree canopy is 177.
Yeah.
So.
The current numbering was based on kind of the evolution of drafting, and so we are in the process, as we get into the fully-formatted plan, on cleaning those numbers up. And we will have a way to document, like, this strategy was 177 in the previous versions, but now it's 160 or something, you know?
Great. That makes perfect sense. And I assume there would also be, what have been useful for me is if there had been a numerical listing of them as well, because I understand a number of repeated, but if I'm thinking, I want to go see 177, I want to know where that is in numerical order, I can find it right away, and maybe that cross-references to where it appears in the goals?
Yes, and that is the intention with the next. Yes, and that is the intention with the next version of the plan, is that we will have a chapter on the strategies that will be that numerical list, and it will also reference what strategy is identified as a primary strategy under which goal, and then which goal is referenced as a supporting strategy.
Okay. And my last preliminary question is, can you talk more about the implementation plan? What is it that you envision there, I presume are ordinances that are adopted, like the zoning ordinance that's adopted that implement the plan? But what else, what is the nature of the implementation plans?
In our last comp plan, there was an implementation chapter, so it was built in within the comp plan, and that outlined, you know, timeframes and tracking methodology. We are, based on best practice research and what we learned from the last tracking process, we are separating that out as a separate document outside of the comprehensive plan, and we will be diving into the approach and the, you know, annual tracking, annual reporting, the metrics, how we, you know, qualitatively and quantitatively track these goals and strategies over the next 15 years.
That's something that I'm going to want to later drill down into a little bit, because if they are outside the comprehensive plan, they have different legal authority, and of course, we have the issue of whether or not the comprehensive plan is advisory or required for all land use decisions to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But that has raised a question in my mind that I just want to think more about and hear more about.
Okay.
And with those preliminary questions, I will turn it open to fellow commissioners for any questions, thoughts. Commissioner Buckley?
Thanks. Yeah, questions about some of the goals, and Ms. Ivanoff, I think you may have just touched on this a little bit, but my perusal of the goals, it struck me very, very obviously that they are very qualitative in nature as opposed to quantitative in nature, and maybe for some things, that's okay, but, you know, for example, this comp plan is replacing not just our last comprehensive plan, but our previous sustainability plan, which was adopted as an amendment to that previous plan. And our current sustainability plan gets quite drilled down and specific with metrics of, you know, we want to reduce CO2 emissions in the city by this much, you know, we want to, you know, divert X amount of tons of waste, you know, there's just lots and lots of metrics, right? And that is something that still seems entirely missing, and it's really important, because how do we know that we've achieved any of these grand goals or that any of these strategies have worked if we don't have some way to measure it all?
There we go. Is that on now? Okay. I can jump in, and then other staff, please. I think the way that we're approaching implementation right now is it'll be really helpful to establish these vision values, goals, and priorities within the comprehensive plan through the adoption process, and then from there, you know, we've already started thinking about ways to incorporate metrics and qualitative and quantitative ways to track our progress, but once we have the goals and strategies firmly adopted, then we can really dive into identifying those metrics that, you know, working with staff and identifying what data do we have that we can, you know, continually track over the next 15 years that, you know, can really help paint the holistic picture, identifying, you know, a number of metrics and really what's going to be meaningful and useful to, again, qualitatively and quantitatively track the comp plan.
Okay. Right, so, go ahead.
Jump in a little bit. One of the maybe limitations of the previous comprehensive plan implementation section is you have a plan that one stopped for 10 years, this one would be 15. If you, and some of the metrics, and I can't speak to all the sustainability metrics, but you're kind of locking in, okay, these are the metrics we're going to measure for the next, you know, whatever years. Obviously, a lot of things change over time. Technology changes. The ability to track, you know, you have the staff that can do that, so it's kind of, the limitation is that those are locked in. If we separate that out and kind of look at how that may be adopted or not adopted, there's more flexibility to look at something maybe after three years, and it's like, we can only track these things, or maybe we need to start tracking this. So it allows for more, I think, for more flexibility over time so that the method of evaluating the plan is meaningful. So that's one of the rationale for doing that.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess my reaction to that is, while I perfectly well-understand the need for flexibility and the value of that, at the same time, there are some things that are so important that maybe they need to be less flexible, and, you know, if we're so flexible that 15 years from now, we've just totally drifted away from the spirit of what we're adopting now, I don't think that's what anyone wants, right? And so to me, it comes down to what does the implementation plan really look like and what's the process for adopting the implementation plan, to make sure that that plan speaks to specific metrics that stay true to, you know, what the values are behind these goals and strategies that all the advisory groups have worked on for over a year. And that's really critical to me, I guess. So, given that it is so critical, talk some more. What is the public engagement process? What's the Planning Commission process, the council process for this subsequent implementation plan, and when do we see all that?
Good question. That's something we need to work out. I mean, we are, and we would need discussion with Planning Commission. We don't have that, you know, all lined out at this point. The focus has been on getting the comprehensive plan moving forward through adoption process. So that's something that's going to have to be a work in progress. We don't have a clear answer. It's going to be this, this, and this, but it needs to have involvement from both the council and the Planning Commission and endorsement at some level, and this, you know, from the Planning Commission as well as City Council. So don't have an answer quite yet. That has to be worked out, and I think we would need further discussions on that.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll just say for myself, you know, one thing I think we clearly need before this commission gets around to, you know, putting our stamp of endorsement on the comp plan, I would feel a lot better with a clear timeline of when that implementation plan is coming, how we're going to go about forming the implementation plan, the, some ideas of the contents of what metrics will be looked at. Maybe not what the metrics are, but, you know, what metrics we're going to include in there. You're saying now, this is where the quantitative stuff is. Okay, well, what are we quantifying? And have some assurance of those kinds of things, you know, so that we know that the plan we're adopting now is more than just, you know, warm fuzzy feelings and great aspirations, but, you know, I think when we get quantitative, that's where we give it some teeth and give it some meaning, and, you know, for me to feel comfortable adopting it, I need to have a much clearer idea of that, and understanding that it's a subsequent process, it won't be done, but we need to have a better idea than I think we have now with, you know, that answer you just gave of where this is going, so, thanks.
And I would just, I think this is actually going to be pretty simple. I don't think there's votes for any comprehensive plan that doesn't have some basic metrics in it, and I'll be talking about some specific language in a little bit. We're not talking about micromanaging it, but in terms of metrics that used to be in the plan, to remove them and say, we're going to have a process in the future where we're going to go back so that we have maximum flexibility, I don't think that is a good approach. Again, none of the things that I'm going to suggest later are going to surprise anyone. They're just very basic, high-level metrics that are consistent, I believe, with what the comprehensive plan is already intending to do, but we'll get back to that. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Chair Kokomire. I want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Buckley and Commissioner Kokomire. That was one of the first things that I noticed too as well, particularly in regard to the sustainability plan that had some very specific metrics, and then now we're incorporating it into the comp plan, and then those are gone. So it feels like a step backwards, and it's concerning to me that we don't even have a plan forward for the implementation. I guess I would agree with Commissioner Buckley that some metrics are so important that it's worth sacrificing that flexibility. Maybe others could be, but, you know, and things can be written in, that they can be revised, they can be reviewed at certain periods of time, but definitely, definitely very strongly agree with fellow commissioners' comments.
Not seeing any other lights, unless, Commissioner Furman?
I don't know if my light ever came on. As we went through the whole thing, I was looking across the goals, and actually, I find a lot of it very exciting, but I feel like I'm piling on, so I don't want to say too much along the lines of the need for metrics, but conceptually, some of these, some of the most exciting goals in here are the ones that I can't fully imagine what the metric would be to achieve it, although that doesn't mean it's not possible. I think some of them are very interesting and exciting to figure out a way to have that a part of the comp plan. But, I mean, I guess the one piece I would say about having the metrics is it works both ways, in the sense that without them, people can use them since you have to comply with it. People can use it to get in the way, or people can use it to develop things that we don't intend, so, yeah, I think the metrics, how they align with these goals is a unique challenge, but it can be exciting if they can actually achieve a lot of what is in here, so.
And again, I think everyone has seen some recommendations that came from Clean Energy Lakewood, which I am completely persuaded by that it makes the comprehensive plan better and doesn't, unfortunately, doesn't really break new ground. It's consistent because of things that we've already adopted. But in Goal 13, "A Diverse Sustainable and Robust Economy," this is where we're talking about, you know, supporting these local businesses, partnerships, new technologies, innovation. In that first sentence, I would like to see expands use of enterprise zones to promote decarbonization through beneficial electrification. This has been an issue that's been from the LAC, it's been before council. This notion of making sure that we use every tool available to help existing businesses, or homeowners for that matter, electrify as part of decarbonization is just a concept, is not really even a metric, but it's something that I think should be included. And I think you have this exact language, but if you don't, I can give it to you later. But Goal 14, where we talk about a diverse, affordable, and accessible housing market, I think the Strategy 151 doesn't need to be changed, but it should also come under that section. I think that environmental justice is an important one to have under that particular goal, so that's just adding an existing one, 151, to that. Strategy 59, here's where I think we are just talking about putting in a metric that we've already adopted, which is a final sentence in that Strategy 59 that says, "Reduce overall citywide water consumption by 20% below 2020 consumption by the end of 2025." And I thought this was a really obvious one, and frankly, I'm a little surprised we didn't have it drafted this way initially, but in Strategy 101, you know, this is entirely about emissions, right? And trying to, it's currently phrased as reducing emissions, but isn't our goal to eliminate those emissions? So in that Strategy 101, I think it's more accurate to say, "Increases energy efficiency and renewable energy and storage and eliminate emissions by incorporating performance standards." I thought that was actually a more accurate example of what we're trying to achieve. Strategy 102, I would add at the beginning of Strategy 102, "Net zero greenhouse gas emissions and," and then the existing language is "regular assessment and updates for the building and energy codes." And then I would add a sentence that, again, is a metric I believe we already have adopted, "Reduce citywide building energy use by 20% from 2020 level by the end of 2025 and achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050." That is arguably the most important. If we're really talking about sustainability, do we still support this metric? I would hope that we would, that we are seeking to net zero greenhouse emissions by 2050. Strategy 103, and this isn't a metric, it's just more a reference, I think, to what the planning department's already done very well, but under Strategy 103, on the sentence, "Regularly assess and update Lakewood's zoning code," I would add, "By enforcing and expanding the enhanced development menu for sustainability." And I would be very surprised if that wasn't something you were already anticipating doing, and I like it being in the comprehensive plan. Having said those things, I think this is a great plan, and I think we are exceptionally close and feeling very good about it. I have a couple of other things. Strategy 134, which I need to pull up. Is that something that you've got handy?
You want?
Oh, parking requirements. Yeah, parking requirements. So I am wondering, you know, there are many reasons, chiefly among them because the state is requiring us to make changes that relates to parking requirements, so we're just going to have to do that. That's a state law. But I was wondering if it might not also be appropriate to add to this Strategy 134 that our desire is really to reduce the street parking and the harmful environmental effects that come from that. I hear from a lot of people about the empty parking lots, how they are heat deserts and generating, you know, just making climate change issues so much worse. I think that that parking requirements, there's an environmental element in that that I think is important to mention. Don't feel as strongly about exact wordage there, but I would like to see that. And then I've got something that I will return to that was literally maybe the first thing I ever said in this process when it began, and it's important because it reframes our entire discussion about how, not our entire discussion, it has an effect on our discussion about housing. There are people who talk constantly about how we're destroying naturally occurring affordable housing, and I think we talked very early on about the fact that the definition in our glossary is incorrect, right? Naturally occurring affordable housing is housing that rents for less or sells for rest, less, for one of two reasons: bad condition or bad location. If you have two houses next to each other, one is market rate and one is below market rate, it's because the one below market rate is in worse condition. Or if you have two across town, one's market rate, one is not, it's because it's in a worse location. This notion that we are getting rid of really great housing that's already affordable and we should be maintaining it rather than having truly affordable housing has been a big diversion in our housing, and housing, in my view, is the most important issue we will grapple with in the comp plan and in the zoning rewrite. So I would like that definition to be accurate, which is, naturally occurring affordable housing sounds great, unless you know what it really means, which is poor condition or poor location. That's why it's naturally occurring. And with those comments, I probably have others, but I'm happy to yield to others that may have suggestions or thoughts. Commissioner Buckley?
Thanks. Yeah, inspired by Commissioner Kokomire, diving into the weeds on a few things. I had some myself relating back to, you know, my previous comments about metrics. Going up a level to our guiding principles, we have sustainability and climate action as one, and there's a sentence in that guiding principle which reads, "The plan promotes environmental stewardship and rapid decarbonization to achieve science-based climate commitments." And I remember in the advisory group meetings, we talked a lot about those words, "science-based commitments," and it was just a constant theme that came up, I think, in almost every meeting in the meeting in the, you know, Transportation and Green Infrastructure Advisory Group. We got to adhere to the science-based targets. I like that word in there because it kind of, you know, begins to hint at what the metrics will be when we get there. The problem is that word is only in our guiding principle, and it's not actually in any of our goals or strategies that we're using to implement that guiding principle. And, you know, I think, you know, climate change is certainly, you know, one of the most important issues of our time. And, you know, this plan needs to be ambitious on that issue. And, you know, just saying that the plan supports it once, but then the goals and strategies that are supposed to implement it don't ever return to mentioning that specifically. Like, those are the kinds of even qualitative phrases that would make me feel a lot more comfortable if they were more replete throughout the plan, that more strongly indicate what the quantitative measures that have real teeth in this implementation plan are going to be, right? And it makes it harder to screw that implementation plan up by not having the right metrics if we're much more explicit in more places in the plan, right? So that's just kind of one example of that. I don't know if staff has any reactions to that, but I have some more examples, too, to go on. No, all right. Let's see. Some of our goals, as currently worded, do actually kind of contain a metric, but it's always in the case of like, the metric is zero. Like, Goal Number 23 is a zero-waste community, right? And I remember talking about this one in one of the Green Infrastructure and Systems Advisory Group meetings, you know, just, I commented at the time, I really love just the boldness and the audacity of zero waste. It sounds so hard, but like, the more we talked about it and getting into some of the strategies and like, some of the really brilliant minds we had in the room who are really into, you know, circular economy and so forth, you know, began to see a lot of ways we can get, we can get there, we can get really close to there, right? It's possible. It does require an adjustment of thinking, it requires some bold policy, but like, it's possible. And so why not shoot for the audacious goal, right? So I love that that says zero, right? You know, but we have some other goals that maybe have room for that, that like, zero is maybe also arguably an appropriate target. And the language of the goals is just so much more wishy-washy, right? Goal Number Four is reduce homelessness. Well, how much, right? How many people living in our city without a roof over their head is the appropriate and correct number? Why are we not shooting for zero there, right? If we're going to shoot for something else, you know, tell me why it's moral and ethical that, you know, some number of people should go without a home, right? I mean, certainly, you know, there'll be arguments for reasons why. It's inevitable and it's unsolvable, but I mean, darn, let's be, let's be ambitious. This is the same plan that's already committing to zero waste. Why not, you know, zero people without a shelter to keep them warm in the night when it's 10 degrees outside right now, right? You know, we have Goal Number 20, a safe multimodal network. Is that enough to push Lakewood into the direction of so many other zeros that have declared themselves a vision zero city where we want zero traffic fatalities, where zero crashes on our roadways that kill people is the correct number of fatal crashes to have? There's a lot of communities that have signed up for that vision. There's fewer who have actually implemented it well. But just, you know, to my point, we need a good plan and a good implementation plan, right? I would, I would like to see Lakewood be a community that specifically subscribes to and aspires to that goal of, you know, zero deaths on our roadway being the correct, you know, moral and correct achievable number of deaths, and implement the actual strategies that get us there, you know? And there's been cities like Denver I know who have declared themselves a vision zero, and they've actually gone backward and crashes have increased. And that's actually a well-studied case. Like, there's reasons why. Like, it's not a mystery, right? If you delve into the details of the transportation and traffic engineering behind it, like, we have a pretty good idea of the reasons why, right? And, you know, Lakewood itself is doing some really innovative stuff in our transportation group with, you know, digging into the root causes of traffic fatalities and, you know, working with, you know, the coroner's office and, you know, our partners in the county and with the police department, and have had some real success in reducing fatalities already, right? Let's cement that and give it further impetus and further importance, right? You know, we have a number of sustainability goals. Number 11, 19, 22, all are goals that's jumped out to me as somehow speaking about climate resiliency or climate action, right? So this gets back to, you know, Commissioner Kolkmeier's point, you know, what's the correct level of carbon emissions in the future, right? If we want to avoid the worst effects of a warming world, then, you know, someday, the correct number of net carbon emissions for the globe needs to be zero. And so Lakewood needs to contribute its part. And, you know, that doesn't have to be some sort of, like, overly draconian thing where, you know, I don't know, like, the government's forcing everyone to change their lifestyles. There's, you know, actually so many carbon reduction strategies that we know, we're already talking about them in the plan that we have drafted right now, where these strategies will actually save people money in the long run, right? They're investments. Maybe they cost a little more upfront, but, you know, if you build a more energy-efficient building, you've got lower energy bills for the life of the building. You know, if you build a multimodal transportation network where people are less reliant on cars, car ownership is expensive. We can save money in the long run for everyone if everyone is a little bit less reliant on their cars. And we can also, you know, get to the point one day of, you know, having the zero emissions, right? So, you know, these things can go hand in hand, not just with saving the earth, but like, you know, saving our own pocketbook and saving and improving the quality of life in our community. And, you know, if we have specific measurable goals that talk about both those things, like, it just, it makes these goals that are written in qualitative ways that are quite inspiring, I think, even much more so, right? So I think that's all the examples I have, right? But if I can sum that up in a pithy way, right, these quantitative things that we're currently lacking and that we so desperately need in the implementation plan can make this plan, like, better and more inspiring, just on their face of, like, knowing what the goals are and having strong enough language in this plan so that we have a high degree of certainty of where these goals in the implementation plan that have the actual metrics, like, what the metrics are pointing to are and how to measure them and what we're doing. So, thank you.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. So I wanted to comment on a couple of points, including the promotion of mixed income development and supporting area planning and minimizing displacements. And, you know, one of my fellow commissioners noted a interest in redefining naturally affordable housing and said that the difference in price is due to location or quality. But I would strongly disagree with that because it can be age, and a home can be older, and it can still be in good condition. Also, a home can be more walkable, and it can be smaller. So let me just give an example. The home that I purchased is in an older neighborhood that is, was built in the 60s, and it was a time when development was built with a lot of infrastructure, in particular, the schools. And I purchased in this area because, one, I want to maximize the cost, and I don't want to pay for a big house. I want a smaller house, I want a big backyard where I can garden and I can hang my clothes up to dry, and I don't want to have to drive a car to get my kids to school. I want to be able for them to walk and for me to walk them. And this is in contrast, which I could have, you know, I purchased in Green Mountain. I could have purchased in Solterra, potentially, probably not economically, it's very expensive. But it's so costly over there because it's a bigger house, but they have a smaller yard. And so it's not even attractive to me, even for the same price. And it's so far away from the schools and the infrastructures, that is not a walkable neighborhood at all. And so all of those cars are coming in to, you know, and so that is what naturally affordable housing is, is the house that I purchased, which, yes, it's older, but these houses have been upkept, and there's a good quality of life, and they're a lot more walkable for families with children, smaller house, larger yard. And so the, and that ties in with the minimizing displacement. So being able to preserve those types of housing, I've certainly heard concerns from folks who, you know, they, they don't want to see their neighborhood, which is a quality of life, with larger yards, with gardening, and some have, right, goats and chickens. I've had chickens, right? And I couldn't even have had those in Solterra because they have a homeowners association that wouldn't allow it. And so that might be more expensive, but it's not more attractive to me. I'm much happier in an older neighborhood that doesn't, doesn't, you know, have those restrictions. And then in terms of the supporting area planning, Number 97, in the targeted corridors and neighborhoods, along with 91, which is promoting mixed income development, and 83, which is diversity in housing types, I guess the comments that I would make there are to dig, the mixed income development and diversity in housing types, the diversity in housing types certainly supports that mixed income development. But one of the terms that I haven't seen here, and I know it's come up a lot, is the inclusionary housing. And that is one of the ways that has really been helpful in a lot of communities in Colorado and across the country to create that mixed income. So we don't have just all high-income housing like Solterra, but, you know, some of those are built, you know, a certain percentage. And so I guess I didn't really see much of a focus on that. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that, the inclusionary housing piece, and maybe if some of the other goals capture it, and I didn't fully catch that.
So, yeah, inclusionary zoning is something that we're working on right now with the Housing Policy Commission in City Council. They've actually seen a draft of an inclusionary zoning ordinance. They, we've got a consultant hired on board. It won't probably be adopted as part of the zoning ordinance, but in the municipal code. But it is something that will be on track timewise with the zoning ordinance updates.
And I'd like to maybe see some mention of that in some of these numbers, if possible, just even that terminology, you know? So, for example, promote mixed income development, including but not limited inclusionary housing, particularly since it's something it sounds like is being worked on. I'm not following City Council, but I'm very happy to hear that. And the other piece in Number 97, in supporting area planning and city-targeted corridors and neighborhoods, one of the concerns that came up a lot in the discussions about the comprehensive plan update regarded the multi-use and that it's been primarily single use. And I know that, you know, for example, in the, like, the Union Corridor, we don't have, we're not, and we're not seeing it in Lakewood, although we do see it in other parts of Colorado and Denver, where like, we have the commercial on the bottom and the housing on top. And I've heard from staff that they haven't been attracting those developers, even though they do exist. And I also understand that it could be within a certain region, right? We have housing in one area, we have grocery stores in another area, we have businesses so that it can be walkable. But I think unless we define a boundary, and I didn't see any discussion about that, and that came up consistently by a lot of folks in these meetings to, and I didn't see it in the draft, and I didn't see it in the zoning, which we would, which we'll talk about later. But I think that's a really important piece, is to define the boundaries within those areas because we can get, like, Solterra after Solterra, or big, you know, 300-plex apartment buildings all lined up. Like, I just passed what used to be the old Target on the way to Lowe's today. And this is just a lot of buildings. But where's the grocery store? And so I think supporting area planning in a city and the walkability goals, unless we can define, we're going to infill everything with housing, and we're not going to have grocery stores. And that's going to force everybody to have to have cars, and it's totally against the walkable neighborhoods. It's, it's just against, it's so contradictory to many of the goals that are listed here. So I guess that, that's maybe one of my most significant concerns or feedback, is that we don't, we don't fill in everything with just housing, that we need to create this community. And we did have some comments that came in that talked about neighborhood mom and pop stores so that you can walk or you can bike to the store to get groceries. And I feel like there hasn't been enough focus on food, which is so critical for folks. And we're never going to deal with the car problem unless we deal with having food, restaurants, and whatnot, men are mixed within these neighborhoods. So really, I hope you'll take that into consideration because it seemed to be lacking. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
I have one more specific one I found, and Commissioner Buckley made me think of this. But in Strategy 105, I think talks about decarbonization of the municipal fleet and having a plan. Well, if we're having a plan in 105, that, that plan ought to say, no, I'm sorry, not 105, is it 137? Maybe 137. That we should plan to eliminate carbon from the municipal fleet. Is it, which one am I looking at?
It is 105.
Oh, it is 105, yeah. So there, it's, the strategy is to have a plan. Well, why have a plan that seeks to minimize? Let's have a plan that seeks to eliminate. That seems wholly consistent with what we're trying to do, and that sort of fine tuning is something that you may want to think about in a number of these, even more than perhaps Commissioner Buckley or others have suggested. But whenever we have a strategy, that is, we should have a plan that does X, why is it not a plan to try to achieve our ultimate goal rather than a partial goal? But having said that, I will tell you that I am exceptionally pleased with the incredible work that you all have done. And I think this is a great plan. And I think that, you know, a little bit of fine tuning and I'm going to be in good shape. However, we are now starting our public process on this in addition to what's been done previously, so that everybody who's listening, hopefully, knows that it's now going to be six weeks until our public hearing, right? That's April 9. So six weeks' time to really go over this with a fine-tooth comb, if there's a comma to move or a period to put in, that is something that you all deserve to know what our input is going to be on that. I think what you're hearing is, there's significant support from the Planning Commission for this plan, but there are still some things that people want to see. And then we will be listening to comments from the public, which we received some today. We'll receive both Lakewood speaks and in-person public comments on April 9. And then we'll be looking at this in a second public hearing on April 23, where Lakewood speaks and in-person public comments will be there. So we, and I know I speak for the entire commission, we're interested in hearing those comments and getting those points of view. And there may very well be other things that we are persuaded should perhaps be changed. But congratulations on such a successful engagement process and a really good draft, in my view. If there's no other comments, from Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. Appreciate especially the sustainability efforts, and just want to emphasize that particularly in the strategies, like, as noted, 105, also 101, having some metrics or some clear ways to meet those, that will be very important and really appreciate that. And along those lines and some of the other comments, do you plan to make any updates before the, before the materials are posted for the April 9 meeting? I see Travis shaking a head yes, so.
Yeah, they will be.
He's the boss if he says yes.
And also, if we can, if you could pass along, Chair, if you have, I know we
And also if we can, if you could pass along, Chair, if you have, I know we were taking good notes here, but if we have any texts you'd like to pass along to us or any commissioners, that'd be appreciated too.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on now to our next item, item number four, which is OA 25001, the zoning ordinance amendments for the staff presentation. Just a reminder again, as I explained the context at the beginning, but I think it's important for folks to understand this. There is not a zoning ordinance rewrite in front of us. What we are hearing today, and I'm eager to hear it, is the presentation that got excellent support from a consultant.
Hi, welcome to.
That is intended to introduce the concepts.
Section one, introduction. The purpose of the code update is to produce an innovative, user-friendly code that implements...
Okay. And, and, you know, I think this is maybe the, a time to remind folks that the zoning code is an ordinance. Typically, ordinances don't come to the Planning Commission. They go straight to city council, and they may have a study session on them, but typically an ordinance has a first reading and a second reading. Now, sometimes they'll do a third reading. What's happening on the zoning code, however, is a far more extensive public involvement process because it doesn't even get to city council until it comes through the Planning Commission. So we're having a study session today. We then will have six weeks before the next hearing on it. That's going to be a public hearing, and then we will have a second public hearing, and then it goes to city council and suddenly becomes like every other ordinance, but it's already gone through a more exhaustive public process. So that's a really important thing, I think, for folks to keep in mind. This is an ordinance, and it has a longer, more expensive, extensive involved community engagement because it comes before the Planning Commission. And with that, I'd ask you to introduce yourself and give us your presentation.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Sam Suter. I'm with Meta Urban Design. I'm joined tonight with Peter Park from Peter J. Park, City Planning and Design. We're going to breeze through this presentation pretty quickly so we can hear your questions and comments, but to ground you in what we're going to cover tonight, we're going to touch on the guidance for the code update. Then we're going to spend the bulk of our presentation on the code update approach itself, and then talk about the next steps, which we've already talked about in relation to the comp plan. So similar path that the project is going on. So just to introduce the project and what we're trying to accomplish with this update, the city desires an innovative, user-friendly zoning code that will implement the comp plan, which you were just discussing, and address some of the community needs, and a zoning code that's easily understood by staff and the public. We'll talk through a bit more of these strategies as we go along, but we want to ground this conversation in the city council values, which they discussed at an October 2024 council meeting. We want to highlight the value number one to support affordable, attainable, and more inclusionary housing. That'll be the bulk of our presentation tonight as we are discussing the zoning changes are more geared toward the residential zone districts. The city council also is prioritizing a zoning rewrite that is bold, imaginative, and embraces innovation. So that's the highlight, again, of what we're trying to accomplish with these concepts that we're sharing tonight, and then inevitably the zoning code draft that you will see later, later this spring. The strategies to support the bold and imaginative zoning rewrite include targeted strategies around missing middle housing. We've already been talking about naturally occurring affordable housing and market-rate housing that is more affordable and attainable. So the code update will be grounded in that priority specifically. And we're also shifting away from this uniform approach to single-family zoning, and we want to create something that's more grounded in the historic building patterns while also increasing housing choice throughout the city. So that's what we're trying to balance with this approach. How do we allow this flexibility while maintaining those existing patterns and contexts that we see in the neighborhood? The state did some, some work for the city, and there are four main updates that the zoning code will have to address. They're listed here. Just to touch on them briefly, there's updates to ADUs, so the city must permit ADUs 500 to 700 square feet. There's a few other restrictions or allowances there that the city must accommodate. The state also is requiring a prohibition on minimum parking for new multifamily, for reuse of residential or mixed use, and this also applies in transit service areas. The state also is requiring an increased permitted, permitted residential density near transit, and then removing the limits on the number of people in a dwelling. So we're taking these changes to state law, and we're integrating them into the code approach. The staff also has had some conversations with the community as part of the comp plan process, which you guys just discussed. Some of those conversations focused on this concept of removing or relaxing distinctions, unit distinctions within the residential zoning. And to accomplish that, the community talked about creating this contextually-based size and design regulations. So the conversation and the group expressed support in moving away from regulating the number of units or the type of the building and focusing more on the size, what it looks like from the street. And then lastly, we're integrating the updated changes to the future land use map. So we've been pretty excited with especially the low form and the mid-form residential categories, and we think that's providing a really strong foundation to create a better code, one that's rooted in the existing built context. So our work is building on that framework and unpacking these existing contexts a little bit more so the code can establish these specific context standards that align the growth with the existing patterns. So Peter will talk a bit more about how we're approaching this and including that context and building from the future land use map, too.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening. My name's Peter Park, and I want to share with you some of the initial thinking on the code approach. As Sam said, right, the source, the guidance for this code is council direction, state law requirements, and this comp plan. We're not creating new code, new code ideas. We're creating it based on those foundations and those set an important discipline. So in terms of the approach, the things that we want to talk to you tonight about, and hopefully we can get into it, is organized into kind of five components. So the first is calibrating the new standards based on existing residential character, right? So this project of how do you accommodate more housing? How do you address your housing affordability concerns? And at the same time, right, manage and balance the growth in the city in ways that is respectful of and contextually sensitive to establish mature neighborhoods. The second is simplifying the residential use regulations. Third is increase in the compatible housing options in residential areas. How do you provide more options, more diversity, more options for housing in existing areas? Fourth is about simplifying and updating the zoning regulations for the mixed-use districts. And the fifth is looking at the overall format and usability of the code to make it more accessible and usable. So on the first one, calibrating standards based on existing residential contexts. So this borrows from your existing mixed-use zones that already distinguish urban mixed-use and suburban mixed-use patterns. And so we're building upon that, and for us, as we describe the context, this really is looking at the existing pattern of blocks and streets and the connectivity of streets, the size of blocks, the size of the lots that sit on those blocks, and the patterns of building, the scale and the form of the buildings. So this is a way for us to get into understanding what people talk about when they say, whoa, you know, we want these buildings, we want new development to fit with the neighborhood. It seems a little bit elusive to, how do you, how do you make that happen? And we think the best way is to first understand what are the patterns that you have today? What is it that we are calibrating to, to accommodate those concerns? So one of the aspects and a combination of this presentation is both sort of describing what the problem is with the current code, with the hopes that the approach that we're proposing will help connect you to some possible solutions. So when we say one size does not fit all, Lakewood has grown over many decades. Its early growth in the northeast corner particularly is a more urban pattern, a street grid, smaller blocks, a high connectivity of streets and blocks, and the parcel patterns are very different than the later eras as the city became a more auto-dependent and auto-centric place. And these maps simply are used to show kind of the age of structures and when those eras of development happened. And in every city in America, by the way, these different eras, from the streetcar base or the early formation of the city to when they became more auto-dependent, created very different block, lot, and building patterns. Most zoning codes that haven't been updated don't account for that, like yours, right? So we think it's really important to dig into these, to understand these patterns. So we mapped the existing zoning, we mapped the existing age of structures, we examined in detail the lot and the structure sizes, and that's how we came out with the sort of, sort of defining what the, what comprises the urban residential. So it's really the blocks and the lots and the buildings, the lots that sit on those blocks and the buildings that sit on those lots. When you look at the areas that we've identified as comprising the urban context of Lakewood comprises, it's about 30% of Lakewood's residential areas were built prior to the 60s, right? And so these early neighborhoods, you know, it's a, it's a good chunk of the city, and the zoning, and I'll describe it next, but that's sort of the pattern in terms of the, the uniformity of the building's relationship to the street and the informity of the blocks. When we get to the more suburban areas, there's less connectivity, right? The blocks are bigger. There's cul-de-sac sometimes, but the street network and the connectivity is not high as it is in the urban. And so these patterns, and again, the way the houses sit on a lot, the way the lots are arranged on a block, vary significantly from the urban context. And so when we look at the zoning and which zones appear in the urban context and which zones appear in suburban context, there's a split that a lot of the geography of the city is comprised of suburban contexts, but there's also a good portion of the city that is comprised of urban. And so these are, again, very helpful for us to understand what those basic development patterns are. So here are the proposed residential contexts on the slide, or the, on the map on the left. So the urban are the darker orange, and the lighter yellow are the suburban residential contexts. And you can sort of reference them to the mixed-use suburban and urban mixed-use. And you can see that some of the urban mixed-use generally occurs adjacent to and with the urban residential areas. Makes sense. And so just in looking at the zones, R16 comprises the majority of the urban context as well as suburban context. And for that reason, you know, it is the most ubiquitous zone, we use it for modeling the code. So the next piece is looking, it simplifies the use regulations. And some discussions have been, already had before we started, and so the staff have been thinking about this a lot of simplifying, again, based on the understanding of the state legislation. And so today, under your current code, across the range of the residential zones, you can see what's permitted, what's limited, what's prohibited in terms of different intensities of residential use. And so the proposal here is to really simplify that. So rather than having these distinctions, basically allowing residential and not distinguishing between a single family and a duplex and attached dwelling and a multifamily dwelling, and really, really collapsing the uses to residential across residential zones. This builds upon and works in tandem with the current policy being contemplated as part of the future land use map and the comp plan. And so in this third recommendation, it focuses on increasing compatible housing options and looks at building form, that is, you know, the mass and scale of buildings relative to the context on the law. And so this is an examination of how you might limit the size of a building, controlling for the context that it is in, and less so on the number of units, so that you can actually move toward allowing more multiple and smaller buildings on, in certain lots as well. Now, one of the things that becomes very useful is this evolution in the comp plan of the residential low form and the residential mid form, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But we think that becomes another one of the foundation points for the organization of the new residential zones, and the lot sizes would be calibrated in ways that, again, are contextually appropriate to the existing block and lot pattern of an urban context and a suburban context. So we modeled the R16 just to illustrate some of the, both problems and beginning to explore what some of the options might begin to look like in this approach. So we're going to look at both the urban and the suburban conditions of R16. When we look at the areas that are urban context and currently zoned R16, right, the most ubiquitous residential zone, we find that most of the lots are in about the, you know, 9,200 square feet. The minimum lot size in these areas is 6,000 square feet today, but what the market delivered was a lot that was bigger than the minimum lot size of the zoning, okay? That's not unusual. Many cities are built at a lower density than what's actually allowed. That's not an unusual thing at all. Even though people think the developers always maximize, that absolutely isn't true, and that certainly isn't true in the way that Lakewood was developed. When we, the other piece that we're looking at is the building size, and we find is that the most common building size is 1,250 square feet, you know, mostly one, one-story, somewhere between one and one and a half story, okay? So that's what comprises most of the urban areas in R16. So we modeled that of a typical R16 zone lot in urban context and a lot of 9,000 square feet, 9,200 square feet, and 1,200, and that's kind of what it would look like, right? We modeled both interior lot and a corner lot, and I think it probably looks sort of familiar to you. Under your current code, in theory, one could build on a maximum build-out, following all the setbacks and the height restrictions, a building on an interior lot of a stand, of a typical lot, R16, a house that was 17,000, nearly 18,000 square feet. Now, we didn't find any houses that large in Lakewood, but again, in terms of what your zoning regulations actually allows, it's pretty big, right? It may be theoretical at this point, but it's an important thing to understand in terms of how your current form standards work, and to what extent do the control for both contacts and control for building size that would be contextually sensitive. So one of the things that the staff has been talking about is looking at, well, what if the maximum size was 2,500 square feet? And so that's what's modeled here. Again, in this situation, the, the median size of a building was, you know, at about 1,250 square feet. So 2,500 square feet is still quite a lot more than what stands, what comprises the city today. And that's about what it would look like in a two-story condition, in an interior lot and a corner lot. Generally, we think that that looks like it fits pretty well. I mean, it certainly is a more compatible scale of building than the, than the previous one. I mean, it certainly is a more compatible scale of building than the previous one. And so if you were controlling just for the size of the structure and not worrying about how many units, you could have a 2,500-square-foot single unit in that envelope. You could organize that in a duplex and have two units, 1,250 square feet or some mix of sizes, but you could have two units in that same envelope. The envelope doesn't change, the unit changes. You could make a triplex perhaps, right? And so each unit gets maybe to about 833 square feet, right? Maybe you could do a fourplex. Now, this is where the economics might not work out, right? So maybe that might be the upper limit of what you'd likely get in terms of 2,500-square-foot envelope, and that might sort of hit the limit on the fourplex. So this is just some modeling that we're doing to just examine what these form controls could look like and what they could do to allow you to allow more units in more places across the city. So we did the same thing for suburban. In suburban, the typical lot size is a little bit bigger, it's almost 9,400 square feet. And importantly, the typical building size is found to be two stories and 2,000 square feet. So here it is again, different context. Here, you could do, under the current zoning, a building of 18,000 square feet, right? And so if that happened in the city, I think people would notice, number one, you'd probably hear about it. But again, this, if you only, if you didn't change the envelope or the potential scale of the building, and then you allowed as many units as you could get, then you might actually get an 18,000-square-foot building, right? And it might have a lot of units in it. So this is where this idea of controlling the size of the building form or the structure relative to the context and allowing more units to go into that and let the market determine how many units. So that's what these next studies show. In addition to those single units, based on the plan and other discussions, we're also looking at multiple buildings, cottage courts and different arrangements and what size lots, for example, would be the minimum lot sizes that you need if you wanted to do a cottage court, right? Organizing house-scale buildings and having multiple buildings on a lot. So this is, looks a little daunting, but it is a matrix to show how, from the comp plan guidance of the new low-form residential and mid-form residential areas, how they relate to the contexts from suburban and urban that we're introducing in the approach to the new code. And then we're cross-referencing those to the existing categories of the zone districts that you have on the books today. These are not the proposed new zones, but it's just a way of understanding how things today organize in terms of low-form, the concepts in the comp plan, suburban, urban, concepts that we're introducing to organize the code relative to your existing code. Because the discussions going forward on the proposal for a new zoning, everyone's going to be asking, how is it different than my zoning today, right? So we think it's really important to track as we move forward to understand how these changes in the code, what they represent relative to the way the world is today. And with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Sam, and she'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of the recommendations.
Thanks, Peter. So as Peter mentioned, we're looking at the planned guidance, the existing context, and we're starting to see where can we collapse or merge some of these zone districts? Where do we want to split them? So R16 is a good example of where we're recommending splitting it based on the context so we can calibrate the standards to those differences we're seeing in the urban context versus the suburban context. And then we're exploring merging that, for instance, with R19 on the lower end of the density because we are finding some commonalities, again, based on context in these areas and these zone districts. We're also looking at what does this mean for the maximum square footage for the primary building? So if that's something you guys want to, want us to explore further, I think the next step will be to calibrate what is that maximum size? Is it 2,500 across the board? Do we want to vary that based on what we're seeing in the existing context? So those are the calibration questions that we're starting to explore, and we're looking forward to having a discussion with you about that tonight. There's a few other recommendations we want to cover briefly before we wrap up. And the next one is to simplify and update the mixed-use districts. Specifically, we're looking at the mixed-use employment district. Right now, that requires 50% commercial in every building. And we know that just with the housing crisis that is facing, we're facing right now, some developers want to do more than 50% residential, for instance. So we're looking at what does that mean for the mixed use or the mixed employment? And considering removing that requirement and/or rezoning some areas could be another strategy. We're also looking at the transitions between the mixed-use zones and the residential zones. So right now in the code, there's a 45-degree bulk plane, but that's applied based on the existing building, not on the adjacent zone. So we're looking at how can we tighten that standard up so it can apply in more areas and more context? And/or we could explore remapping some transition zones. So there's a couple of different strategies we can explore for the transitions. We're also looking at improving the overall format and usability. So we were pretty surprised with how clean and organized your code currently is. It could be a lot worse. So we appreciate the simplicity that you currently have today, but we're looking at making improvements incorporating more graphics so it's a little more user-friendly, a little more accessible. We're also exploring moving to Muni code versus a PDF. And this is an example from Greeley, Colorado. They recently updated their code. So this is what Muni code looks like based, or with some of the more integrated graphics. So this is something that we're moving toward exploring for the updated format for the code. Lastly, in your packets, I believe staff summarized some of these other, what we're calling known issues with the code. There's a little bit of overlap with what we covered today, but we can unpack all of these tonight, too. And so just to summarize, we're looking at the overall approach to residential use. We're looking at simplifying that from what you have today to something that allows residential use and just controls overall form and size of the building. We're looking at the residential lot size and exploring ways to simplify that so we can allow more housing options throughout the city. I just mentioned the changes to the mixed-use zones. The state has mandated some changes to the parking minimums. I believe you guys already mentioned the development, enhanced development menu. I know staff is looking at that as well, as some changes to the procedures. Let's see, so the last slide we just want to summarize again are the five main ideas that we presented today. We can and look forward to discussing all of these, but just to wrap up, this is the same timeline that the comp plan is going through. So the next step will be the city council study session on March 17th, and then public hearings with you guys again on April 9th, and then April 23rd with the city council public hearings starting in May. I think we're open for your questions and comments and appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I think I'm living in one of those 1,250-square-foot homes potentially. They were developed in this neighborhood that I'm in around the 1960s and is in that, probably that smaller block, more walkable. What I'm not sure you considered is that they had basements. So almost every single home has been built out in the basement, so even though it was originally built as a 1,250-single-story, we all have 2,500 in our basements. So I don't think that was depicted in the graphic.
That's right.
Just something to note. I think it really changes things, and I think that my home is pretty representative of that.
Yeah, these are models that are describing what is above grade, right? So the basement area, sometimes it's used, sometimes it's not, isn't counted.
Yeah, and I would say like 98%. Like, I don't know any home in my area that isn't, and everybody has a basement. So I guess maybe that might just adjust things a little bit. My next question related to looking at the two categories and how you're differentiating the low and the mid, it sounded like you're looking at that based on the size of the home? I'm trying to understand what specifically differentiates those two.
Between the low, the residential low and the residential median?
So that was a comp plan distinction. So that came out of the comp plan process of determining areas that were traditionally single-family detached from different unit types, townhomes, low-scale apartments. So the, I think the mid-rise residential is traditionally anything other than single-family detached.
Okay, so, because I thought you were talking about splitting R16 into, between the two.
So that's, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so, let me go back.
Well, he's pulling that up. I think there's two things going on here. The comp plan is talking about low-rise versus mid-rise. The consultants here tonight talked about the distinction between land use patterns, urban and suburban. So I'll let him.
So when we look at what are your current zones, which are primarily the single-unit zones, so the R143s to the R16, those are all single-unit zones, and then the R2 is a two-unit zone. So those, you can see, as Travis was saying, would comprise, from the comp plan, low-form residential areas. And then the mid-form residential areas are where the buildings are typically more than a single-unit or duplex scale. So those line up with what are today your RMF, RMH, RMS, RMU zones, right? So in terms of the overall scale of the mid-form, that more closely aligns with the zones that today are multifamily zones, which allow bigger buildings, which allow more lot coverage, if you will. I mean, you typically find them as, these are areas that the scale is not low-form, it's mid-form.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And I guess my next question is maybe for staff or Commissioner Kochmeyer. We had a discussion a while back about eliminating the size, R10, and I'm wondering where that discussion went in our list. I think there were some recommendations and how that might tie in with this. So I don't know if staff or commissioner, you can speak to that.
Yeah, that's still very much a part of this. So in, looking at these low forms, the R16 to the R143 and talking about splitting them into urban and suburban form, the next discussion is merging those into, so the urban R16 through R143, merging those into some smaller distinctions and having lower lot sizes and/or allowing more than one home on a lot. So for example, if we've got some larger areas with, you know, 10,000, 20,000-square-foot lots, you might have an option, you could either split those up, either subdivide them into smaller lots or keep the larger lot and put multiple homes on that lot.
So you're looking at both of those options?
Those are both on the table.
And then I guess my last comment would be in regard to changing the 50/50 commercial, and I think I touched on this earlier, my concern about having neighborhoods that are not walkable. We're not going to have grocery stores, we're just going to have a sea of large residential units. And I think the only way to address that is to put a boundary and have some requirement, and you have to, you know, be able to do some planning in advance to set aside that land. So for example, you know, in some of these areas, like King Supers is going to, you know, be going out of business, we're just going to get more residential. I mean, to be able to keep that as a grocery store and for areas that don't have one that have already, like that Target that went away, and it's just all that to ensure that there's grocery stores there, because that's so critical to walkable neighborhoods. And so again, I guess I'm a little concerned about eliminating that 50/50 unless we're able to put some boundary and ensure that we have walk, really genuinely walkable neighborhoods with access to food. Thank you.
Commissioner Buckley.
I have a lot of questions on different parts of this. Start with the square footage limits we're talking about, regulating the forms by, you know, we're mentioning 2,500 is kind of like where the, you know, double where the median is in a lot of these places. I'm just still not even clear, very basic question. Are we talking about the square footage, like the interior square footage size of the house? Like, you would say my house is X number of square feet, like on a, like a Realtor listing if you're marketing your home? Are we talking about like the footprint of the building, which is a different thing?
So these are the square foot, the interior square footage, not the footprint? Because in some of those cases, like the configuration was a two-story, so it wasn't counting the basement, it was counting the floor area above grade.
Okay.
And again, again, these are just models to study, oh, if you had 2,500 square feet in a two-story building, it'd be like this. And situate that relative to an existing typical block face?
Right.
How would that fit compared to how your, you know, 18,000-square-foot building that your current zoning allows?
Sure, okay. Yes, that's a good clarification, and I think just to Commissioner Peters' point. It's important to recognize that there's a lot of neighborhoods in Lakewood. I know it's not just hers, you know, mine, too, which was built, you know, about a decade before Commissioner Peters' neighborhood on, you know, the opposite side of town. Also, you know, probably 90% plus of the homes have a finished basement now. They were built without, with an unfinished basement, but, you know, the homes are all 70 or 80 years old. People have finished them, right? Everyone has one. And so it meaningfully increases the size of the home and, you know, in terms of like form and like, you know, how harmonious is a building with a neighborhood? Well, you can't see anything underground, right? So I think it's appropriate to not count it explicitly, you know, state that in the code that that's not counted towards our limit here, anything underground, because that's just, that really contributes to the form of so many neighborhoods in Lakewood today.
Yeah, it's really, how does this allocation or, you know, how does it manifest in a building in a neighborhood, right? Because that's what we're, that's what we're modeling and trying to understand is how does new development or reuse of existing buildings or additions to buildings? What would be the result in terms of its fit with the existing patterns?
Got it, okay. It struck me, too, like your modeling, it was based mostly on like what's possible within the context of like the existing zoning and the kind of median lot that exists in those areas, right? That's fair to say?
Initially, right, we, that, those, the models we're showing tonight, we, because we know a lot more, the ones that we showed tonight are the most ubiquitous lot sizes in the most ubiquitous residential zone, again, just for illustrative purposes in conversation.
Understand, okay. Those are very illustrative and helpful examples. I'm going to suggest, you know, that, there's that one slide that's showing here on this monitor. Yeah, right, there's like, you know, maximum square foot for a primary building, you know, greater than 2,500 square feet, 2,500 square feet, these are shown with question marks. Take that to be preliminary, okay? Just a suggestion of maybe how to think about that. Since part of the intent of regulating by square foot is for compatibility and also for like returning to maybe a pattern of residential development that's, you know, very old, and the oldest parts of Lakewood, like in Ward, too, and the northeast parts of the city, we have some neighborhoods where you'll find on a block a single-family home and a duplex or a triplex, like a small apartment building with like, you know, six to eight units, just kind of all jumbled together. Maybe they're on the same block, maybe they're just one block over from each other, you know? That form already does exist in some parts of our city. And like, I think it'd be reasonable to expect that we're going to see something like a resurrection of that, you know, 80-plus-year-old form in other areas, like when, if we go to this kind of zoning regulation. And so taking lessons from that about how those buildings seem very organically natural with each other, I'll point out two things, like, they're not all strictly the same size, right? They feel harmonious and in scale with each other, you know, even though that, maybe that like four or six plex is like noticeably bigger than the single-family home on the same block. You know, it's not like massively out of scale, but it's a bit bigger, right? So maybe a rigid 2,500, just as an example number. So maybe a rigid 2,500, just as an example number, you know, cap on the square footage that's allowed for a single-family home. Maybe that's good for the single-family home, but within the same district, we can say, well, you know, if it's a, if it's a three or four plex or something, it goes a little bit bigger. Maybe it's 3,000 square feet, maybe it's 3,200. Not massively bigger, right? Not 18,000 square feet. But something a little bit more than 2,500, you know, would be more in keeping with the historic patterns of how these things have actually happened. And I think importantly too, for like housing attainability, it's kind of an incentive when some of these lots redevelop to build more units. And you know, if you, if you build a house, you know, a building is 2,500 square feet and 3,000 square feet, it's, you know, roughly pretty close in cost. But like, if you divide it by two or divide it by three, it's a lot more affordable or attainable than if you're just dividing it by one, right? And so, you know, giving that little bit of extra incremental size, I think is important for like the attainability goals of like, really the whole reason to regulate in this way, while also happening to be very true to the character and scale of what already exists in Lakewood in the few places where this happens today, right?
That's exactly what the approach is built upon. So why do we do this in our places? Part of setting the maximum for a single-unit size closer to what it is today, or certainly less than 18,000 square feet, is it disincentivizes the scraping of a single getting replaced by a much bigger single, right? So the one-for-one replacement issue that many people are concerned about gets addressed on affordability, on contextual fit, and a lot of other things. And then, it basically, your code today basically privileges bigger, more expensive homes, rather than smaller, more affordable homes that fit with the neighborhood. So this way of, that's why we have 2,500 square feet and a question mark. Because what, when we got, we showed you the model, when we get to four units and 2,500 square feet, it becomes a pretty small unit, right? And so, maybe, maybe there's an increment, additional increment at three units or four units, and we can do the math, and we are looking at other existing models of precedent that you have in the city to figure out how much more increment potentially you can get to on a particular-sized lot, to, again, encourage, if a building gets replaced or reused and more units put in to allow a little more square footage, but maybe not get out to that 18,000 square-foot situation ever.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's great. I really like that. And so, yeah, keep on working in that direction. I think I'd be very supportive of that. We've touched, a few of us tonight on this topic of like, you know, can you walk to a grocery store, like walkable neighborhoods? Do we have commercial amenities nearby? I thought there was a very thoughtful comment by someone on Lakewood Speaks, just about small corner stores, right? Being able to walk to that. You know, I think, you know, I would have appetite in the right places and contexts, maybe to, you know, allowing in a residential zone district, you know, an appropriately small-scale, like neighborhood-serving, commercial store. And like, maybe, you know, the commenter was talking about a corner lot, like having a small store in every neighborhood, right? And he put a lot of restrictions around it, but I just liked that he just made so much sense, right? Like, maybe it literally has to be on a corner lot. Maybe you could even go so far as to, it has to be like on a corner lot, like on a collector's street or something, right? But it's like, it can be a commercial space allowed within the residential zone, you know, you probably know more than X square feet, you want to keep it a neighborhood-serving commercial. Really minimize the maximum number of parking spaces allowed there, right? Don't go overboard with the parking. You know, have good design standards so that the building is like identifiably commercial, but in keeping with the otherwise residential character around it, when you talk about things like just design standards and architectural standards, you know, minimizing the lighting. But if you do kind of do all those things, I think you can get to a place where, you know, some of these, you know, small-scale commercial buildings can be integrated into corner lots and neighborhoods. And, you know, kind of enhance that walkability naturally in a way that's like, you know, different than having to rely on building a very, you know, urban, mid-form, you know, large building with a ground store retail and housing above. If we get that, that's great. But like in other contexts in our city where it's more this low-form residential, like mixing in some of that commercial, I think just being allowed, you know, is something that could do a lot for the, you know, the walkability goals in the comp plan. I don't know any reactions to that.
A lot of communities we're working in are exploring just that. I was asking the comp plan team if that is contemplated as part of the land use in the policy and the comp plan at this point. And they said more in the mid-form areas, that allowing smaller-scale, commercial within walking distance of, right, residential populations is, could be supported in a code.
Okay. Yes, that's like the mid-form areas, which are like the comp plan guidance areas, which is not most of our residential area. Most of our residential area in that, you know, comp plan, future land use map is the low form. You know, but the zoning code does very, you know, interestingly and provocatively, kind of roughly divides the, you know, lower-density residential areas in our city in half between this urban and suburban context. Is it like maybe appropriate to look at that urban-suburban split as, you know, how we define, like where these corner stores are, like, you know, where the block pattern's consistent, like, you know, the underlying factors you use to define what urban is, right?
Yeah. When we do this, we, I mean, the thing is, is a commercial, you know, a small corner store is going to exist if there's enough market demand.
Right.
So are there enough rooftops? Are there, right? So it'll, super, you know, a very low-density corner store, the only way it's going to work is if people drive there. I mean, is that, right? So, the convenience of a corner store exists because it's convenient to enough people who will support a business, right? And so, we typically, these are being allowed in places where, under current conditions, they're disallowed because the zoning went exclusively to a residential use. But they are in areas that were historically served by streetcar or had density, that they actually do have a high, higher density of residential and multi-unit, missing-middle housing existing.
Right.
And so, conversion of a house on a corner, on a collector's street, might be a good candidate for a reuse of a building, and they have it happening already. So it's a reuse of a building, and it's a little ice cream shop, or it's a little coffee shop. And actually, we have a lot of those in Denver, we have those in a lot of our metro.
Mr. Parker? I think you sort of maybe just highlighted one of the advantages of us doing the comp plan and the zoning at the same meeting and at the same time, is that if we are hearing from the council, this is something that we should be looking at in both the comp plan and the zoning, now's the time to give us that guidance, you know, as a body, and we can, I think we can amend both documents to accommodate that.
All right. Great. Yeah, no, I agree. I agree with you, and I agree with Commissioner Koke Meyer, what he said at the outset, that's, we're doing the process in the right order at the right time.
Wait, so is that a, you know, I don't know if that's a consensus from the council, from the commission, that we should do that?
Specifically on the issue of more allowance for storefront businesses, I was going to comment on this as well myself, which was, I found that very exciting and very interesting, and, you know, fundamentally returning us to more of the notion of the village, where people do not have to drive everywhere. They can go get a quart of milk, they can go to their veterinarian, they can go do the things that they want to do in a more walkable way. I think it is, personally, it is one of the great tragedies of Euclidean zoning, that those have been wiped out in reverence for single-family-only, exclusive neighborhoods. But that would be my view. I don't know if it's a consensus, but it's something that I think we definitely want to hear more about. Did you have anything else?
Come back to me. I'm interested in hearing the other commissioners' reactions to what I've said so far, which is quite enough.
So, I'm going to challenge you a bit more, because I am hearing an awful lot of traditional words. Historical context, character and scale being maintained, recognizing the way the world is, residential context that is today, contextually sensitive, calibrating. All of these are about the virtue of sameness. And I guess I'd like to hear the planning professional's explanation as to why sameness is in and of itself a virtue, rather than us identifying virtues that then we plan for. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. So, there's so many different ways to answer this question. But I'll just say that, starting with understanding, again, this has been part of the conversations in the comp plan, that there is, right, the voices in the community talk about the neighborhoods where they live. They talk about the character of the neighborhoods where they live. And so, a lot of our work is finding ways to allow the evolution of places and the evolution of neighborhoods in ways that doesn't suggest, as many post-World War II zoning codes were, a tabula rasa, let it be cleared away and start over, right? That was, that's a lot of work that I do in cities across the country on zoning codes. The zoning codes that we're updating today were created in a way where there was a new vision for the city that imagined the old city was dispensable, was, right? And so, I was the former planning director in Denver and oversaw the rewrite of the Denver zoning code. By a few actions in a context-based code, we legalized thousands of properties that became non-conforming, that were older neighborhoods, that were denser than 1950s zoning imagined. Because in the 50s, the idea was, we need to get rid of Curtis Park, and we need to get rid of neighborhoods like Wash Park, right? They're old houses. Who would want to live in old houses? Well, turns out, people really like them, right? But what the zoning did at the time is that it imagined a different future. So, what we've learned in our practice across the country is that there are ways to achieve your affordability, your diversity, your housing goals, and, and respect and build and strengthen the character of established neighborhoods. They aren't, it's not an either-or proposition. It's often phrased as, if we cater to the pattern of the existing neighborhood, then we're stuck in that. And that's absolutely not true. And certainly, I think the approach that we're describing is finding ways to encourage more smaller and more affordable housing, and also not create a lot of significant disruptions to the character of neighborhoods that people know, love, made investments in their home, made investments in where they live. Because change is difficult. You deal with that all the time, right? The acceptance of change. And so, the degree of that change, in terms of the form and character, what we find across the country is, people are generally okay with, you know, it's okay if it's three units, as long as it doesn't look like a big apartment building, right? And there are ways to do that.
Well, I very much appreciate your honesty, because I think that is the truth. The truth is that it's not really about optimum planning, it's not really about the best thing for the city, it's about people's fears, their fear of change and the resistance to change. So I understand that, and we all live in that environment. But I do think it's really important that we don't lose sight of those goals. Single-family residential, we now know, after 100 years of Euclidean zoning, is the worst, least sustainable type of housing there is. It's the most expensive. We have this massive infrastructure. And Lakewood has a problem, that not every town does, but we have a very serious problem, which is we're essentially a no-growth city, right? Over 23 years, our population has grown 8%, 23 years, three-tenths of a percent a year. And at the same time, we have lost 30% of the human beings that live in our traditional residential neighborhoods. We've gone from 3.3 per household to 2.2. So the great challenge, it's not a question of saying, boy, this is great, let's make sure we maintain it. It really is a question about how do we go about repopulating our households so that they are sustainable, so that all the money we're spending on sewer and water and streets and snowplowing and whatever else doesn't go to 2.2 people, it goes to 3.3 people like it did 30 years ago. So, having said that, I think this notion of having multiple different types of residential uses within all districts makes perfect sense. I do, I guess I'm curious how effective you think that will be, because we often hear, you're going to change the code and the whole world ends after that. You know, we had, we approved actually already ADU, somewhat less regulation of ADUs, and we were told that it was going to wipe out single-family residential. We were getting two ADU permits a year for a decade. I checked yesterday, there's only one permit pending. So, even if we make these changes, will we achieve the objective of having neighborhoods that have families, have children? Because all of our neighborhoods are skewing older, wealthier, so income diversity is being lost. That's a function of larger houses, larger lots. So I guess I'd just be curious, do you have a sense, if we do adopt changes along the lines you're suggesting, will we actually achieve the kinds of results we need to achieve here, and over what horizon?
Well, there's, sort of, a starting point in our practice is, it's a little bit like the Hippocratic oath, first do no harm. Because the thing about codes and zoning is that it is, I mean, it is identifying a property owner's bundle of rights, what you can do. Now, that, those, what you can do with the land and what the market will actually support, those aren't necessarily, they're not necessarily the same thing, right? And so, at least right now, what we've observed in the way that we framed some of the problems that we identified that are out of line with your comprehensive plan goals is both on the use, right, and on the size of what is allowed today. So, that, those are the parameters that we're working in to figure out how to increase, not limiting to single-use, but actually opening it up to really quite a, much more open range, and then controlling the size of the structures in ways that, again, would be related to the scale of existing places. And so, we do believe that that will provide more options. Whether developers would see it that way, whether buyers would see it that way, is yet to be determined, right? It's happened in some cities, it happens slower in some cities. ADUs, perfect example. It is a very difficult fight in every single city to allow ADUs. And the rate at which the uptake of ADUs and the delivery of ADUs, there's not a single city that I know that suddenly there were thousands of ADU applications. Because, you know, there's a lot of different reasons, but just because you can do it, doesn't mean you do. You have R2 zones today. I don't know what the percentage of R2 zones that have two units versus actually the market delivered one, right? My guess is your R2, right? So, just in terms of the answer, it's sort of, our goal is to figure out how to allow and promote as much diversity of housing in existing neighborhoods where you already have the infrastructure, where you can better and more efficiently, as you described, use the infrastructure. The remedies that we're looking at right now are looking at first-rem... The remedies that we're looking at right now are looking at, first removing what is, what are the major, you know, barriers in your current code system. And again, I think our recommendation is, it is worthwhile to be able to convey to the community that the work is also cognizant of the neighborhoods where they live, that the, that the code, what's being imagined in the code changes, isn't promoting kind of the scraping and the total removal. Because that, by the way, won't happen either, right? It's just the way the market works. There are a few places where that, where that happens. I mean, it's pretty rare.
But to your point of doing no harm, if there is an existing regulatory structure that is harmful, we should be seeking to change it, right? So, you know, that's my, there's such a large body of evidence now about what has happened, and it's not just here, it's everywhere. We wind up excluding people because of the lack of affordability. And we, and there's a significant racial component to this, because they are disadvantaged groups that don't have the economy. So, for the folks that say, I want to have my big house on my big lot, that can't be seen in a vacuum. That has a real harm to us as a community by excluding people. So, I'm hoping that what you're suggesting leads to an improvement in that ill, that is an existing ill. It leads to an improvement into what has been depopulation of our residential neighborhoods. Everyone talks about big buildings. They're all scared of big buildings. We literally don't have that many big buildings, and we're not growing that much. But even if we did, this is, I think, gentle density, bringing people back to the neighborhood so that maybe a corner store would make sense, is eminently more important to me. But I, we've all seen the reaction to that, and I think, again, I appreciate your honesty. It's not really about the merits, it's about managing people's fears. And that is something that government has to do. It's why I will never run for office, because I would like to focus on the actual data that we know. And our current structure is not good for us. And there are a lot of suburban communities around the country that are suffering from these same ills, and they're not going to take the steps to save themselves. So, end of that lecture. Let's see if there was someone else. Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, thank you. My light's been on since the earlier discussion about the corner shops. I had wanted to comment on that, and certainly, I found it very compelling, both in terms of the comments that we had been, that we'd received as the commission, but also in relation to the lower form density. So, for example, and I can go back to my own neighborhood, so many of us have gardens and we have excess, and so, a lot of times, we set up that, you know, we'll share, we'll have a certain place, or, you know, even when I had chickens, which they all got killed by hawks or foxes or whatnot, but I had them for a good run, about five years, and I always had extra eggs, and I would, you know, give those away. And we really have a big, big sustainability and backyard gardening community in my, in my neighborhood and in that vicinity. And having that corner house where somebody could sell their excess eggs or lettuce or whatever would be great. So, I guess my question, I was really curious, when you spoke with the comp team, they said mid-form and not low-form. I would personally really like to see that in the low-form for sustainability. And, you know, we would walk, we would ride our bikes, it worked really well. We've had a lot of gatherings, like seed sharings and various events. So, I'm really interested to hear from the comp plan staff, what are the barriers to low-form? Because I'd really like to see that.
I think, in looking at the land use, and certainly that, maybe Matthew Seibert can help with that with detail, but we try to match up the land use with some of the existing zoning. So, there's, that's where maybe the rub is in, that the existing zoning doesn't allow that, but I'll let Matthew kind of explain that.
No, that, Matthew Seibert with comprehensive planning, that's exactly right. So, we're trying to align the comprehensive plan with the existing zoning code, and the, for example, the R1 areas allow home occupations within the mid-form, which is the MR zones, those are mixed-use zones, so those allow small-scale, small-scale commercial uses. I think it's, it's, you know, I don't think that there's going to be, Paul could probably answer this better, but I don't think there's going to be something in the zoning code that doesn't allow you to sell eggs out of your house. Now, if there's somebody who wants to set up a corner store in Green Mountain, then that would be something that the zoning code would have to change to address that. And it sounds to me like it's already allowed these sort of small-scale commercial uses in some of the mixed-use zones. Should it be allowed in the urban residential zone as well, say the R1 in the urban zone, or even in the suburban zone, maybe Green Mountain is a suburban context, should it be allowed there as well? So, that's, I think, that sounds like what your question is, and I think that that could be something that could be addressed in the zoning code and in the, in the comp plan land use categories as well.
Okay, well, I would appreciate some consideration and maybe some feedback, because I think to have a little corner grocery store within the neighborhood, I think folks, you know, would potentially be supportive. And I have seen some comments, a number of comments, that folks feel that, you know, changing the zoning is a pretty big deal, and they'd like to have a little bit more time to consider, like, and maybe as you finalize the comp plan, it's been helpful to feed into both, to have both, but to take a little bit more time and maybe do a little bit more outreach. And speaking to Commissioner Kochmeyer's, you know, maybe we want to look at some changes that are not, you know, were not envisioned in the original, and perhaps this could be one of them. And I can't say that everybody would support it, but I think there could be a lot of support for it, and it would be worth reaching out and looking into.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that. And then, I also wanted to comment on my fellow commissioners' question in regard to, you know, how do we repopulate to become more sustainable within these existing structures? And I guess I would put it back to even all of us commissioners, you know, what would it take for you? Because I think we all live in, like, single-family homes, and what would it take for you personally? And maybe it starts with each of us to set that example, and that's personally what I've looked into doing. And I would say that I am doing that. And really, I think the key is in these basements, because this is a way that you can build out and, you know, be able to, with some minor changes that don't require a big building permit, you can really separate out these units. You don't have to pay new TAP fees. It's a lot more affordable. People don't build out the ADUs because it's very expensive and costly and that infrastructure. But if we can, you know, particularly leverage the basements, and, you know, in particular, so, you know, just putting some small interior doors in makes it, it makes it well, and that's what I've done. And I have split up my house, and I do rent it out. And I would, you know, based on that experience, I'll say the one thing that I would absolutely love to have is a separate entrance for upstairs and downstairs. And so, that, if you want, you know, to answer this question, how do we increase this density within these single-family homes? Make it easy, make the code, you know, to, to be able to have that separate door. I mean, I do it, but I have to get along with everybody who I live with, right? Because we're, even though there's a little bit of separation, I have increased the population and the density within there. I've done it in a very low-cost way, and it would be even better if I could have a separate door and, and be able to, like, you know, open up, but also, you know, to have that door between the upstairs and the downstairs open, but have an own separate entrance and be able to lock that. And I think that's the practical key to being able to, to do this. So, thanks.
Got another one for you. What is the thinking around minimum lot size? I know that the city council resolution, based on a recommendation from the planning commission, was to eliminate minimum lot sizes. It looks like the thought might be to maintain those, but do some adjustments. Help me understand kind of the virtue of still having minimum lot sizes in residential districts.
So, again, when we look at the, the patterns of neighborhoods today, the more urban, the more suburban, those distinctions first are made in terms of the street and block patterns, as we were talking about, and then the lots that comprise each block. And what you find out, right, is that a lot of the suburban, what are characterized as suburban typically are the lower density, from R1.9 most of the time to the R1.43s, right, which have the largest minimum lot sizes. So, our recommendation is actually to collapse and remove those really low-density zones, and then merge them, for the most part, down to 9,000, all right? So, in some places, that could allow the development, that would pretty significantly change what exists there today. Again, we're just modeling these at this point, but, but the reason for using the current references of the minimum lot sizes is, again, just in terms of the look and the feel and the general character of the neighborhoods, that is, the size of the lot, the relationship of the buildings, the space between, kind of defines the space between the buildings. Those are the patterns that we believe primarily distinguish these suburban and urban characteristics. And so, at least for now, we're using the reference of those lot sizes, as well as, you know, looking at reducing the minimum lot sizes. Like, so, right, right now, I mean, the thing is, is what would you enable in terms of the code? Right now, your R1 sixes, the median lot size, or the mean lot size is nearly 10,000 square feet. So, even though it's a minimum lot size, like, your R2...
Right, but that's the whole point, right? It's 10,000 square feet, and since our minimum is 6,000, you cannot split that lot and put two small houses on it.
That's right.
It's prohibited.
That's right.
Okay. So, so we're not trying to maintain that higher lot size, are we? We're trying to get to a circumstance where land, which is only one of two inputs in housing, it's the building costs and the land, we're trying to free up more land, right?
So, again, if you're going to allow more units in a building, or, you know, in a, on a given site, that's one way of increasing that density.
Okay.
And, yeah, I mean, I think that we're modeling out, again, we're trying to understand the world as it is today, just to know what changes are being proposed, what's the difference? What is the degree of change that's being proposed? Because from our experience, when you change people's property rights, you've got to be absolutely clear about what is it today and how is it changing, in terms of what can happen next to me and what can happen across the street? People care about that, right? And so, it's really important in our practice to make sure that as we're, we can change numbers, we can just cut them in half or get rid of them altogether, but not understanding what the potential consequences of what could happen leaves you pretty flat-footed. And we think that it is our responsibility to help you have informed decisions and to do these studies and model these conditions, so that in your engagement with the community and as, in your deliberations, you have eyes wide open what these changes could enable.
Okay, let me try it a little differently. We hear from a lot of people that what they really want is to own their own home, and the cost is prohibited in Lakewood and a lot of other places. But it wouldn't be if people could get a 1,200-square-foot house on a 2,500-foot or 3,000-foot lot.
That's right.
So, what is the virtue, if that's the goal, that's what people want, why are we still maintaining these artificial minimum lot sizes throughout the code? Wouldn't it be addressing exactly what people want by eliminating those minimum lot size and deal with it strictly in terms of setbacks? Because your house, we, it's not like we get rid of setbacks, right? So, people are going to have space between their houses, but they want a house they can afford to buy.
May I, may I suggest something? So, there's a couple of things at play in what Peter's trying to explain. So, that product type, the 1,200-square-foot front print house, and then the smaller lot, that is something recent, kind of in a reaction to these single-family lots, right? And so, what Peter's presented tonight is context. To take that 9,000-square-foot lot and subdivide it into, I can't do the math, for smaller lots, you've got to have a road or frontage or something. And so, the, taking the existing housing stock within the context and subdividing those into smaller lots is kind of difficult. You've got to have a piece of property that then you can meet the standards of the subdivision ordinance, i.e., they all front on a street or something like that. And so, that, what Peter's talking about is kind of, it's difficult to do that smaller lotting pattern without going through the plat and then not meeting the standards of the subdivision ordinance.
And I totally understand that. I guess I was just asking, but does that, because it would be difficult and not likely to happen, that's the reason to maintain a minimum lot size?
I guess we don't look at it purely in terms of that lot size, because, like, in this example, the lot is 16,000 square feet. We can get five houses on that. We could also configure that and get eight units in a cottage core. And you could organize it in a way that doesn't look like it's significantly disruptive to the pattern of the neighborhood, but you are allowing ownership possibilities, you are allowing, so those are the kind of things of thinking about, you know, it's sort of like, what is the scale of the, the chassis is the lot, and the houses and the buildings fit on the lot. And so, the lot relationship to the block is kind of a significant aspect of the pattern of the neighborhood. If you, you could allow much smaller minimum lot sizes, but you also need to think about, well, what's the practical lot width in that condition, right? Because each lot has to have its utilities. Each lot has to have sewer and water and electrical service. If they're going to be driveways, no, you're not going to allow driveways on 2,500-square-foot lots, right? You don't have alleys in a lot of, on a lot of blocks, so do you really want to, you know, I mean, just, just in terms of the, I mean, it's not just a math issue, it's a formal, and that's why we do these models, because there's a lot of things that we can think about in terms of pure math, if we reduce the minimum lot size, then we can get more housing. If you factor in the things that are required to provide access for utilities, all the other elements, and what qualifies as the frontage, in a typical block that's 160 feet deep in terms of lot width, you might be able to organize 2,500-square-foot lots, but, you know, maybe they're, I mean, they're probably going to be organized on something like this, whether they're flag lots or they're fee simple conditions or a lot of different arrangements. So, the question about the minimum lot size, there's a lot of literature about large lot sizes, and we understand that, we totally understand that. But a 5,000-square-foot lot that you have today, A, it isn't a, it isn't a common thing, right? So, we are starting with... a common thing, right? So, we are starting with the 6 and the 9. We're looking at the actual median lot sizes, and we are exploring, well, what if, what if you did actually make it, what if the minimum dropped a little bit from 6,000 to 5? And you do have a lot of R19s, where you would have a lot, you would have enough lot area to split it, right, and organize. But again, if we're going with, you can do as many units, you're not controlling the use density, that actually allows you a lot more flexibility on a given lot, and I can get more units on a 6,000-square-foot lot. Again, that graduated system that we have, that we talked about, if you dial down what a single, the size of what a single unit is, it discourages the scraping of a single for a bigger single unit, right? And so, but what it enables, and it privileges, is the ability to do more than a single unit in the case of developing, redeveloping, adding on to an existing condition. So, in those situations, we think that is pretty useful in supporting your environmental goals, to, right, encourage the reuse of the carbon of existing buildings. Make it easier to do that, and add another house in the back, right? Or convert an existing house, make that a duplex, and add another duplex on the same site. And if you, but again, we're managing the size of the buildings on the site. The problem is when you get one unit on a large lot, right? That's the low-density or the density issue that you're talking about. And I think this idea that, the staff wanted us to explore was, oh, yeah, if you can get more units on a given lot size, then you're, then that gives you a way for the lots in the, in the existing, on a block face, to still have that similar cadence of what people know and they understand. But what is today maybe one unit, is pretty easily three units on that same lot.
Right. No, I appreciate that very much. That makes sense. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. You mentioned a few things, looking at the mixed-use employment zone, removing the 50% minimum commercial requirement. I'm intrigued by that. I've long thought myself that's probably a good idea, so I'm happy that's in here. You walked me through some data here, like, the ME zone, my understanding, when it came into effect in the 2013 code, actually didn't have that requirement, and council added it sometime around 2017 or 18, I believe. And the stated goal of that was precisely to create more actual mixed-use buildings, and we've had a few discussions about that tonight. My criticism at that time and since is that I think that the 50% minimum probably, like, overshot it, right? Do you have any research or data-backed analysis of, like, is there a, do we just go back to completely abolishing that limit? Is it appropriate to lower it to some other number, where we say, okay, well, you know, if it's in a zone that allows maybe a five-story building, we say that no more than one-fifth is commercial, right? And so, then you have a ground floor of commercial and four stories of residential above it, right? That would be more logical to me than 50/50, which is, you know, ground floor and maybe one floor residential. So, maybe there's something like that. Has that worked? And just as a data point, too, have there been any mixed-use buildings built into the zoning code since that 2017-18 era reform that, like, have the 50/50 split? Are there any in the pipeline? Is that even a thing that exists? Because I don't know of any, and that's, the lack of me being able to point anything, has kind of long informed my view that maybe that reform was a failure at doing what its stated intent was.
No, you're exactly right. The, we had this discussion back when the code was changed, but the idea of vertical mixed-use is not something that's been proven practical in suburban Lakewood, right? We can occasionally get a ground-floor retail on, you know, on our terio, or on our collector, but the idea that we'll have these, you know, split 50/50 vertical mixed-use is just not buildable. And honestly, the only rezoning applications that we have received, or that we have had, you know, applications or questions about, have been rezoning away from the ME zone, because those lots have proven largely undevelopable under the current code.
I've noticed that trend as well, in rezoning hearings here in the past that we've sat through, yeah.
And so, we basically made those lots undevelopable under the existing market.
All right. So, what's the, what's the best way to fix it? Right? Is it going back to abolishing any restriction of the ratio of residential to commercial? Is there some other way that?
So, yeah, there are two options in front of us and in front of you, and we'd love your feedback. Yeah, one is just remove that and go back to the ME as it existed in 2015. The other, and I think perhaps where staff is leaning right now, is just to rezone all those MEs to MG. There's not really a significant distinction between ME as it was and in the MG. It was really, you know, a naming convention more than anything. So, I don't know that staff has a compelling reason to keep the distinction, if we remove that 50/50. So, I think our current recommendation would be to rezone them to MG, but we're very interested in your input.
Yeah. So, maybe the ME zone just goes away, all the ME becomes an MG zone everywhere in the city. I mean, yeah, that, in a lot of places, that makes sense. And, I mean, I'd be totally fine with, you know, personally, with getting rid of, you know, the 50/50 requirement, or any ratio requirement as well. But, you know, I, at the same time, there is, that I'm okay with that, there is part of me that would actually love to see a real bona fide mixed-use building in some areas. And I do, you know, still have a part of me that wonders, like, if some ratio, like a, you know, 20%, like, one part out of five ratio, or something like that, one part out of six ratio, like, if there's any data of anywhere, something like that, actually working and achieving that goal of getting more mixed-use, like, if we keep the zones in the right places, along, like, the arterials or commercial streets that are, you know, going to support that to begin with.
So, the example that I give in Lakewood is Belmar. It's like, all of us look at Belmar as the picture of mixed-use, right?
Yeah.
But it's horizontal mixed-use. In over 100 buildings in Belmar, there are only three that are vertically integrated between commercial and residential. It is a mixed-use area that has residential buildings and has commercial buildings, and they all work greatly together to create this walkable, livable neighborhood, without any of them having required vertical mixed-use. And so, I think that's the goal, is for us to create these walkable neighborhoods with a variety of building types.
Right. No, and, yeah, thank you for stating that. I think you said that and pointed the Belmar example a little more eloquently than I was able to at the moment. But then, yeah, just my sense that, like, the market will kind of deliver, in a lot of cases, these mixed-use, you know, in a mixed-use area will have a horizontal mixing of uses kind of naturally occur. It is precisely why I'm personally okay with just completely, you know, eliminating that 50/50 requirement, you know, or rezoning away, you know, to MGS, you know, whatever, you know, whatever makes sense. Move on. You mentioned briefly on one of the slides, looking at procedures for large projects, and looking at the enhanced development menu. As I'm sure you remember, Mr. Parker, just, I don't know what, six months ago now, the planning commission passed a resolution making recommendations to use the EDM to have a procedure for larger projects to, you know, require, in some cases, public input, or incentivize it strongly, and incentivize, you know, public stakeholdering, and incorporating desired community elements into projects, and doing it early on, when the public can actually shape a project, as opposed to, you know, the public discovers all these flaws with a project at a planning commission hearing, when the design's kind of baked, and, you know, there's two bad choices, yes or no, right, rather than working collaboratively from day one. So, those are kind of things I would, actually would have hoped that city council would have taken up by now, they have not. So, that is what it is. But are those kind of things from our resolution, is that what you're envisioning for those items of integrating that into this code rewrite?
Yes, that exact proposal's being written into the draft proposal. So, adding to the enhanced development menu points for, you know, public meetings when they're not otherwise required, and also the potential to require additional public meetings in certain instances, specifically park-adjacent properties.
Right. Yeah, I think that was a very strong resolution that we passed, and, you know, really got to the heart of a lot of community concerns. We heard during the process of developing that about, you know, the public wants more input on projects, but just, you know, maybe there's a, there's an imagination among some component of the public that what that means is like a planning commissioner, city council hearing for everything. And that's like, that comes at the end of the process, it's the worst time to shape a project. You know, so, I was really excited about what we came up with, to give the public a time to interact meaningfully early on. And, yeah, I commend you for putting that into the zoning. I'm eager to see the next draft, to see that integrated.
You don't have to. Okay. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion about Belmar, and one of the things that we've seen since the 2012 rezoning is that nothing like Belmar has come up again. And I think that spoke to some comments that we received in looking at some plan developments or opportunities. And I guess I am concerned because the, you know, taking that 50% requirement, I hear you, that in a vertical building, that that may not be practical. And, again, I guess I would just go back to, if there's any changes to that, I'd probably maybe change the name, not, you know, not call it ME, but maybe give it a different name. But that, again, we are not going to see a natural variety unless it is written in and it is planned, because we have not seen that variety in any areas, in any circumstances, since we've had that rezoning in 2012. And so, I guess I don't see anything here that's encouraging more development, like Belmar, or, you know, looking at these, these mixed areas, like Union is listed, but I think Belmar is a little bit more planned out, everybody likes that. And so, I guess I would challenge staff to really think about multiple ways to encourage that, because what we have now doesn't, it discourages it. And again, I would just go back to what I mentioned earlier, like, planning, ensuring that we have grocery stores, or, you know, having a certain mix of things within a certain area. That's not the only solution, there's other solutions, but I think this is the critical thing. Folks want walkable neighborhoods, and nothing we have right now is producing that. And I'm not seeing any changes that are really aimed at that. So, just, I think this is maybe one of the most critical things of the comprehensive plan, and the thing that I heard the most from folks was wanting those Belmar-type neighborhoods. And, and I don't see any of these proposed changes getting us any closer to that, just bringing us farther away, and we have not seen one since that change.
Yeah, if I could respond, so, yeah, there'll never be another Belmar in Lakewood. Belmar was over 100 acres that was developed as one project, right? And we don't, we don't have that. We don't have another 100 acres that we can develop as one project. So, the way to create those neighborhoods is to encourage, we can't require the market to provide things, right? We can encourage the market to provide. And if you look back, the areas that we created in 2012 as mixed-use, prior to 2012, were 100% commercial. Those were entirely, so, look at Union. Union in 2012 was 100% commercial up and down. The only way for that to even out into a mixed-use area is to add residential. And that's why that's the only thing being added, because it's low on residential. Union corridor is still 90% commercial. So, over time, it will even out, and that will look like more and more residential until that equilibrium has been reached, right? And same is true for Colfax, same is true for Wadsworth. So, all these areas that we're seeing only residential, it's because until 2012 was 100% commercial, and it's starting to even out.
But most of our land is that residential, and we're not going to see any evening out of the commercial and the residential. That's why I think this neighborhood store, you know, these are small things to start with it. And I, and I can appreciate some of these zones, but I also, again, we're seeing on Colfax that we're having food desert issues, and we're getting high, high density, and all of those people absolutely are going to require cars. And so, the more we can ensure, and I just don't see anything that's specifically addressing that. So, thank you, I appreciate that, that feedback. And I hope we can work together and figure out a way to ensure that these mixed uses come in, because we are mostly residential, and to add more residential in, you know, we want to try and balance that with the commercial.
Apparently, we've had a number of lights out, so my apologies. Commissioner Gribbliounis?
Thank you. Well, the good news is, a lot of what I was going to ask got answered, and had thorough discussion already. So, I just have a few quick things. I guess the first one is, Travis, was Belmar a planned development, or was it, or how was it developed?
It was. It was a planned development before we had mixed-use zones. So, right, it was the only way to do mixed-use at the time that it was developed.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I'm starting to appreciate more and more the idea of horizontal mixed-use. It's hard to use Belmar as kind of the best example project, since it was kind of all intentionally put together. So, other areas like Colfax, or Wadsworth, or Union, seeing how they develop over time more organically is, I mean, it's just not going to look or feel as intentional as Belmar. I guess my next question is, do you have any example codes that we could reference that might have similar maximum building area? I'm familiar with the building code prescribing that and max lot coverages. I just haven't seen one that dictates kind of a max building area within zoning.
Yeah, so there's a couple that we've worked on in Golden.
Yeah, so, one example is Golden, and we looked at that for, the maximum size was calibrated to the building type. And then there was also an incentive for preserving an existing structure on the lot. So, if you added onto a building, or if you added a cottage in the background, you can get a higher overall size on the lot. Then we worked on a project in Issaquah, Washington recently, and there is a model code for the Puget Sound region, and they, the model code was looking at that precise thing, overall building size, but then allowing some flexibility and some calibration for specific building forms. So, the cottage court, and then a courtyard building form were the exceptions that had a more, I think, calibrated design standards based on that size and different configuration, like this example is showing. But that one did provide that regional guidance, and then we applied it at the local level. So, Washington State has some good guidance around that, too.
Okay, great, and thank you. I think it's a really interesting way to organize the zoning code moving forward potentially. And there's a lot more detailed questions I would have about it, but now's probably not the time for it, which leads to my next question of, kind of, where in the process, or when in the process, will we start to see, you know, more concrete numbers to review and analyze?
The goal is for us to have a complete draft ready by the end of March, so we'll have that to you by the beginning of April.
So, for our next planning commission, we'll kind of be going through that level of detail?
You'll have a draft before your public hearing.
Awesome. I'm excited to see it. And then, I guess the last thing, just to note, is the idea of transitioning over to MUNI code sounds amazing. It's always easier for, it's always easier to work in that than PDF, so I would highly support that. Thanks.
Commissioner Furman?
So, I will say one thing, that we've talked about two aspirational things, right, which is the, everybody wants the walkable neighborhood in the corner store. It seems like that's, everybody may be an exaggeration, but it seems like that's a common desire. And another desire that is maybe not as universal, but is true, which is the idea to, how do we instill more density? So, I had a quick question. We, going back to something you were asking about, which is, is there a particular reason not to allow a zoning that is a zero lot size? I understand what you were saying about the ways in which- I understand what you were saying about the ways in which to use lots as they are, and, because what I guess I'm getting, I'll be quick about what I'm getting at and then ask the question again. Because the reason the corner stores and a lot of the mixed use don't work is, if you look up just the basic standards of the number of DU per acre you need to support a store, other than little pockets throughout those areas, we just don't have the density. And so you need the density. If that's really what we want, the walkable neighborhoods, you need more people. We just simply don't have it. And so if that's really what we all believe we want, you have to allow what you're saying we want, which is the density. That said, it seems like there would be, and you can tell me I'm wrong, it seems like there would be no reason not to allow any of these efforts that would increase some of that density in these areas organically. My thought being that, exactly right, nobody's going to go tearing down a house because as small as the house may be, your house, for example, in Green Mountain, is not particularly, it's, it's still not at a price point anyone's going to buy it and tear it down, right? So it's only in these very small, organic ways that anyone would ever add, for example, a duplex on one of those, because you're not going to go tearing down a house that's going to cost you what it would. So is there a reason not to also create zero, you know, minimum lot sizes in some of these zones? Or is it, is there something I might be missing?
I mean, early, early zoning codes had, for example, in Denver, for the lower-scale residential zones, one and two-family residential zone in Denver, the minimum lot area was 3,000 square feet. When you get to the multi, what one would consider a multi-unit zone, they then, most codes were organized to say a minimum lot area per unit. So that was a formulation for density. And so the denser areas might get to 100 square feet a lot area per unit. That's pretty dense, right? That's obviously not single unit, right? And so without being so explicit about, these are multi-unit zones, these are single-unit zones, or one and two-family zones, the early codes didn't really contemplate this sort of distinct lot, right? They just had a specification of lot area per unit. You could, you could move to that, for sure, in areas that were originally established as minimum lot areas. But again, if you dropped it, went to zero, or if you dropped the minimum lot area per unit pretty drastically, I don't know that necessarily would result in more density than the approach that we're proposing that would allow more density and, at the same time, be cognizant of the patterns that already exist. Because, but, but it might scare a lot of people, because, because there's no rule, right? And the reality of the economics that you bring up is that it might, it might not make any difference at all, right? Is the developer going to buy a whole block of houses and demolish all the houses and build huge apartment buildings? They could, and the question is, is that what you want, right? So I would say in a, in a regional example, the closest thing that I'm aware of where there was a total transformation from what was primarily a single-unit neighborhood was in Cherry Creek North in Denver, which was historically very modest houses on 50-foot lots, that over time developed, if you go around there, you might find a few original holdout houses. There are very few of them left. But for the most part, they got replaced by bigger houses, or duplexes, that were bigger houses, that were much more expensive. That is, to me, one of those examples of an area that is what was an established, single-family neighborhood that got totally replaced by something that's denser, a little bit denser in, in some ways, but generally just got bigger and more expensive, right? And so in the approach that we're talking about, we're, we're contemplating that you would allow more units than what happened there. Again, would the market respond and totally replace whole blocks of the neighborhood? Probably not. But it would certainly allow you to encourage more opportunities for smaller scale, more affordable, and ownership or rental, or be an owner and have a rental options than, than what exists today in your, in your single-unit limited zonings.
I think we're hearing a push to examine smaller lot sizes, so we'll, we'll certainly, yeah, we'll look at it.
For me, it was really just a question to make sure I wasn't missing something.
You'll have to hand signal if you're late, is it working? But I think we have no further questions, and we so very much appreciate all of the work that's been done on this. It's given us a lot to think about. My overall impression is it's going exactly the right direction as it relates to gentle density, which is really something that I have always thought was an important goal for us. And so very much appreciated, and appreciate all the staff's time on this long evening, and we will see you next in April, I believe. Thank you so much. And I think that just takes us to general business, where, Mr. Rice, do we have any scheduling updates or anything else you'd like to share with us?
Right. Upcoming calendar. Jaime's going to put this in an email, so all the commissioners have these. Our next couple of meetings, non-zoning-related, conference plan-related, we're looking at March 19th and May 7th, so we'll be pulling for that, and then we'll also...
Well, no, those two would not be on comp plan and...
Yeah, that, that, non-comp plan...
Ah, non-comp, sorry.
Are the 19th and May 7th. And then we'll, we'll send in that list as well, the two comp plan dates that are coming up, just so you have a calendar. So that's what we'll update you on. So if you have a conflict, please let Jaime know when he gets that out.
So our next scheduled meeting will be March 19th.
19th, yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I think that's it. Thank you so much, all. We will adjourn at 9:53.